Good evening, everyone. We're on the record. Did I ask everyone? Can I ask everyone to take a seat, please? Mr. Harrington? If I put my glasses on, I'll see more of you offenders and name you by name. Good evening, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Wednesday, May 13th in the year 2015. We had a scheduled 6:00 PM start. My phone, which I am silencing, showing the time of 6:17 PM. We'd ask that you all silence your phones. Okay, council members at roll call. We have Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Here.
Osborne.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Rivera. Waterman.
Here.
And LaVara.
Here.
We have all nine members in attendance. Would everyone rise to observe a moment of silence?
Carmela Fodis, mother of Thomas Fodis, employee of the Law Department. Donald Daly Senior, father of Eileen McCabe, employee with Department of Public Works. Mary Ann Rioto, sister of Randy Rioto and Rioto Funeral Home in Jersey City. Angela Tenega, retired employee at Cuzac Care and an active member of Our Lady of Victory. And Margaret Stack, mother of our neighbor.
Nicholas.
Mayor Bransek.
Father of Joe Capizoli.
My boss's mother, Goldie.
And one of our regulars at the city council meeting, we found out today she cast away no-trip order. This boarder passed away. Very much remain standing for salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council members. Could I have a motion to add 3N, 3O, resolutions 10Z 25 through 27 to the agenda and then defer to 10Z 22?
Motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Osborne. On the motion, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. LaVara.
Just on, just for the record, on 3N, I want it duly noted for the record that it was properly submitted and requested to be added to the agenda. I know there are folks here who were, who have strong passionate feelings about that ordinance. So while it's being added technically as a late item, it was properly submitted for consideration for today's council meeting. And it was an oversight on the clerk's office that it didn't make it to the printed agenda that was ultimately provided to everyone. I vote aye.
Okay, the motion carries. We are to 10Z 22. 10Z 22 is the resolution sponsored by Councilperson Gajewski.
I signed it. They get Barbara had it.
Point Boynton for Barbara Sumato. Let me read the resolution into the record. No, she was having the council president sign. Okay. Reading it. I have the honor of reading this resolution into the record. This is a resolution honoring Alton Brown Jr. for donating a kidney to save his father's life. Council as a whole approved and offered adoption of the following resolution, whereas Alton Brown is a lifelong resident of Jersey City and is a graduate of PS-15, Henry Snyder High School, and New Jersey City University. Whereas raised in a loving home with his parents, Alton Senior and Susan Brown, Alton is close to his brother Ricky and sister Shante. Whereas educated and trained as a teacher, Alton is an English teacher at Henry Snyder High School, goes back to his roots. Appointed in 2011, he has always had a passion for writing and loves interacting with children from the community where he grew up. And whereas Alton began teaching Zumba in 2011 at the Mary McLeod Bethune Center and form fitness in other area gyms, Alton was successful losing nearly 100 pounds while finding others to lose weight, build confidence, and see the results in their own hard work. And whereas Alton is giving to his community, he participated in Beacon Christian Academy Thanksgiving fundraiser and other worthwhile charitable causes. And whereas a health crisis struck the Brown family, and Alton Brown Senior was determined to be in need of a kidney to survive. Without regard to his own health, on December 10th, 2014, Alton Brown Jr. gladly gave one of his kidneys to his father to show him appreciation for all of the love, support, and encouragement his father had shown him. And whereas Alton Brown Jr. should be recognized for his generous act of love, now therefore be resolved that the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City does hereby honor Alton Brown Jr. for donating a kidney to save his father's life. Good job.
Thank you guys so much.
Call for the vote.
Okay, we're gonna vote on it first. On 10Z 2, Councilperson Gajewski.
Alton, by your actions, you show yourself to be a truly remarkable and good person. And I think you're very deserving of this honor. I vote aye.
Thank you.
Councilperson Ram Chau.
Vote aye.
Councilman Bajano. Councilperson Yun.
Grayson, I vote aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Alton, I tell you, I've worked in a kidney transplant center for 22 years. And we've dealt with a lot of people that I've seen the very worst of it and I've seen the very best of it. The fact that you were able to give the gift of life, especially to your dad, means the world. It's something that's extremely commendable. I'm very proud of you. And I wish you nothing but the best of luck moving forward. I definitely vote aye.
Thank you.
Councilperson Waterman.
Vote aye.
Council President.
Alton, thank you for the inspiring example that you set for all of us. I mean, it's your father. What can you say, Mr. Brown? You got a great son, Mr. and Mrs. Brown. I vote aye.
Man, is there anything you'd like to say?
Sure, I'd just like to thank, of course, my father, my mother, my loving family who have supported me ever since I was young, and they continue to support me. Without the proper love from them, I wouldn't be the man I am today. Thank you.
Councilperson Gajewski. Just hold on, Alton. Councilperson Gajewski's gonna take some photos with you. And your family, if you want, to join you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Pleasure meeting you. Happy to have you. Yeah. Very nice meeting you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Council members, let's begin by reading the titles of the first reading ordinances into the record. We have quite a few. 3A, City Ordinance 15061, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 3, Administration of Government, Article 3, Mayor, to establish a Bureau of Innovation under the Office of the Mayor. 3B, City Ordinance 15062, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 3, Administration of Government, Section 19.1, Resident Response Center, Decentralize the Permitting, the Permitting of All Festivals, Carnivals, Fairs, Flea Markets, and Other Public Events Under the Director of Cultural Affairs. 3C, City Ordinance 15063, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 332 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 8, Permit Parking, Amending Section 332-58, Parking Restrictions in Residential Zones, and Section 332-67, Violations and Penalties of the Jersey City Code. 3D, City Ordinance 15064, is an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter A 351, Executive Orders and Ordinances of the Jersey City Code. This relates to the Chief of Police. 3E, City Ordinance 15065, An Ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City Adopting Amendments to the Land Development Ordinance, Expanding the R1A Zoning District in Ward A. 3F is City Ordinance 15066, is an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City Adopting Amendments to the Morris Canal Redevelopment Plan to modify permitted uses, height and density, as well as create an affordable housing provision in Transit-Oriented Development West Zone. 3G, City Ordinance 15067, An Ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City Adopting Amendments to the Tidewater Basin Redevelopment Plan to Allow Medical Offices. 3H, City Ordinance 15068, An Ordinance Authorizing the Transfer of City-Owned Property Within the Bayfront 1 Redevelopment Area to the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency, this is Kellogg Street. 3I, City Ordinance 15069, An Ordinance Authorizing a Fifth Amendment to the City's Lease with Journal Square Plaza Urban Renewal Associates for 1 Journal Square Plaza, Block 586.5, Lot B, to amend the term and square footage of space. 3J, City Ordinance 15078, is an ordinance approving a five-year tax exemption pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey statutes annotated 48:21-1 at SEC in Section 304-12 of the Municipal Code for property designated as Block 8803, Lot 9.01, on the city's tax map and more commonly known by the street address of 210 Ninth Street. 3K, 3L, 3M, City Ordinances 15071 through 15073 have been withdrawn. 3N is City Ordinance 15040, An Ordinance Adopting Amendments to the Land Development Ordinance, Adopting the West Bergen East Lincoln Park Historic District as a Municipal Historic District. 3O is City Ordinance 15074, An Ordinance Supplementing Chapter 32, excuse me, 332, Point 22, Parking Prohibited at All Times, Amending No Parking Anytime, Prohibition on Washington Street, Montgomery Street to Second Street, Section 332-25, No Parking or Standing Certain Hours, Designating the West Side of Washington Street, Second Street to Bay Street, as No Stopping or Standing Monday through Thursday except holidays, 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. An Article 8 Permit Parking, Section 332-58, Extending Zone 4 Residential Permit Parking to Include the West Side of Washington Street, First Street to Second Street. Council members were at 3A through O noting that K, L, and M withdrawn. Starting with you, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Ram Chau.
Aye for intro.
Councilperson Bajano.
Aye on all of them except for N.
You're voting no on N. Councilman Yun.
I vote aye for introduction, but 3A, regarding for Bureau of Innovation Team, when I see that the powers and the duties of bureaus of innovation, that one of the items is missing, my concern is that City of Jersey gonna be funding almost $700,000. So I think we, this city council, right to knows that what's going on with the innovation team. So I'd like to add one of the paragraph that innovation team must provide quarterly report to this city council. That's what I'm looking for. You know, so Brian, speak with Jeremy.
Assistant Councilman, we don't need to add that into the ordinance if we can have Mr. Platt indicate that that'll be a practice. Yeah, you need to turn it on two places, Brian. You have it on in two places. Open it up.
You know, that's a great idea, except the council always has the right to ask for reports of any division or department head at any time under the Faulkner Act. You just have to go directly through the business administrator, not to individual division or office directors. So to have it in the ordinance is really not, you know, within the council's authority to require it, but you can always go through the business administrator. And if he doesn't provide you with it, there's a remedy for that as well. But you can compel individual city employees to give reports to the council.
No, it's not. You know what I believe that? The Bureau of Innovation, you know, it's not actually former city organization, you know, but now we make as a formal organization the City of Jersey City. So what we wanna know is that transparency is a very important part of this council and this city. So I'd like just make sure that even though we not put in the ordinance, that Bureau must have to provide, not must, I mean, that provide quarterly progress support to the city council so we knows that what's going on in your part. And the outside, we understand more so we can help each other, try to make it better. You know what I'm saying? Not dictated in your, you know, your department to our Bureau. You understand? But as long as you cooperate, you committed, you willing to provide the progress report, I'll let it go, okay?
Yeah, absolutely. Not only will we provide you with reports, we'll provide the public with reports. We will be engaging with the council as thought partners, and also, we have already started to engage with, with members of the community and community groups as partners as well. So yes, we will be 100% transparent with everything. For you.
Beautiful. Okay, I vote aye.
But it can't go in the ordinance.
Right.
I'm sorry? Oh, can't go in the ordinance? Okay, fine. But as long as you promise, Brian.
Absolutely. Yep.
Your vote, Councilman Yun?
Vote aye.
On all for introduction. Councilperson Osborne.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Coleman.
No on N and aye for introduction on the rest.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye for introduction.
Council President.
Aye for introduction.
Okay. We have nine zeros on everything except N. Is a seven-two vote. Councilmembers Bajano and Coleman, voting no. 3K, 3L, 3M have been withdrawn. The others, nine zero.
That's what I'm saying.
Council members, members of the public, we have first, second reading ordinances. 3A, excuse me, 4A, City Ordinance 15050, is an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City Adopting the Garfield Avenue Redevelopment Plan. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Please identify yourself for the record.
Libra in Washington.
Go ahead, Libra.
I would like to know what area of Garfield Avenue is this? Garfield runs from Communipore to the city line, so I would like to know what part of Garfield.
The borders include Commercial Street, Wilkinson Avenue, Arlington Avenue, and then between Marcus Street and Bayview. I'm not good with directionals here, whether it's north, southeast, or west.
So like I said, it's coming down to Communipore Avenue?
No, it's Bayview.
What's up? Yeah, I see.
Okay. Vern, are you satisfied? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing on the subject ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by the council president, seconded by Councilperson Osborne. To close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski. Ram Chau. Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
I vote aye, but.
This is to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I vote aye, yeah.
Councilperson Osborne. Councilperson Rivera. Close.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
We've closed the public hearing, nine zero. For final adoption of City Ordinance 15050, Item 4A on tonight's agenda, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
I vote aye, but they have a very interesting paragraph in this Garfield Avenue Redevelopment Plan. One of they say every 10 residential units, they will be obligated to include one unit that is affordable housing. So in other words, this plan requires 10% affordable housing units. I hope that rule apply for every real plan in Jersey City. You know, it's not fair, certain area only 5% has a bonus, and this year required 10% is not fair. I believe that this rule apply for, I hope, I wish, to apply every real plan in Jersey City to bring up the fairness to people of Jersey City. But I vote aye.
Councilperson Osborne. Coleman.
I'm happy to see this go through because I'm very familiar with the area and the building that is there now has caused a great problem for that area, including myself. And I am very happy that it's going through, and I hope to see some, some better things happen to that residential area of Ward F. I vote aye.
Councilperson call. Councilperson Rivera.
I vote aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the adoption of Item 4A, City Ordinance 15050. Onto Item 4B, City Ordinance 15051, An Ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City Adopting Amendments to the Morgan Grove Marin Redevelopment Plan to create a community benefit bonus provision on Block 11508 along the Luis Munoz Marin Boulevard frontage and to expand the four-story Subdistrict A Zone. This is a public hearing. On the ordinance, any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
I heard Councilperson Coleman first, and I.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. We have people here.
They, they came. So, folks, I know, I know folks were... Did they hear your instructions, Robert?
I'm sorry?
Did they hear your instructions? Can you repeat your instructions to them?
Instruction, my instruction.
Do you wanna speak on 4B?
Yeah.
I know there's like an entire gallery of people here, that's why.
Are you here to speak on Item 4B? The Morgan Grove Marin.
If you're here to speak, you can step up to be heard.
Sir, your name?
My name is Michael Bachner, B-O-C-H-N-E-R.
Michael, your last name, I'm sorry?
Bachner, B-O-C-H-N-E-R.
B-O-C-H-N-E-R. Yeah, we, the court reporter needs to hear you. Move that microphone up and project, please.
Okay. I along with my cousin Paul jointly own 48.84% of the portion of Block 11508 that is in the MGM redevelopment zone.
Sir, can you speak more directly into your microphone?
I... Okay. I along with my cousin Paul Bachner, who's by my side, jointly own 48.84% of the portion of Block 11508 that is in the MGM redevelopment zone. In my opinion, although I'm not in disagreement with this redevelopment zone per se, the process that was followed to bring this revised plan before you is flawed. Approvals were sought from planning and zoning and neighborhood meetings that were held with residents of Block 11501, 11602, and other neighborhood groups without the city or the applicants seeing fit to notify the majority property owner in this redevelopment zone of changes that might impact the value and zoning of the respective properties. In regards to Block 11508, the changes in the plan go beyond the applicant's domain and have an effect on other properties. The other property owners should have been notified of these proposed changes and should have had the opportunity to hear and have input on these changes. To my knowledge, no such notice was given to the other property owners of Block 11508. Notice was only given to residents of property owners in areas outside the redevelopment zone. There are issues concerning the elimination of eminent domain that Councilman Yun and Councilwoman Osborne brought up in the first reading of this resolution that, from what I can see, have not been addressed. There were changes in the plan specific to my properties where no notice was given of the proposed change. There are height and density changes that directly impact my property. There are height and density changes that directly impact my property and once again, no notice was given for these changes. There have been more issues relating to these changes, but the amount of time that this plan was made available is insufficient to analyze and digest the changes ma-made. Keeping in mind that to this date, I have not received any notification regarding this plan revision, I respectfully ask that this reading of this resolution be tabled from today's agenda and sufficient time be given for a comprehensive review of the plan. We would also like to review this with planning to better understand the changes and to be assured that our rights as property owners have not been violated and that the city took our concerns and of our property into account in a responsible manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have, I have a question for, for someone, is someone in planning here?
Matt?
Yeah, Mary Ann Butch Carter is here.
Matt?
So, so I know that we don't have to notice, I know that we don't have, by law, I know we don't have to, to notice neighboring, um...
Property owners?
Property owners, um, but I thought we did have to notice within a redevelopment plan itself, so I'm curious if you could explain to me what the process is because it seems strange to me that if you were within the redevelopment plan that you wouldn't be noticed.
There, there is no notice requirement within the redevelopment plan for amendments. There is only notice requirements for deviations from the redevelopment plan for site plan approval.
So, can I, can I provide an analogy and just make something up to make sure that I'm understanding you? So, I could, I could create a redevelopment plan for your house and give it eminent domain and not tell you about it?
No, no, when, when a plan is adopted, uh, A, the, there is notice to all the property owners within a redevelopment plan. So, everyone is noticed multiple times, there is multiple notices in the newspaper and to the county and postings with the city clerk.
But, but the individual property owners affected don't get notified?
They are, they do get individual letters.
Okay, so they're saying they weren't notified?
For, for an amendment to the zoning, they do not get a notice. They would only get a notice on the site plan.
Okay, so there's not a legal requirement to notice, okay.
No, but, but, but the, but all the owners are, in this plan, were noticed when the plan was adopted in 2007 with a copy of the plan and a copy of the acquisition schedule and, and everything else with it. And, um, so that's how.
Okay, so, so there is no legal requirement, thank you, I understand. Um, is that Jeremy?
Jeremy?
Jeremy.
On a go-forward basis, is that something that we can change as a council? Can we, can we have somebody please drop an ordinance requiring that especially people within the redevelopment plan get noticed? Anyone who owns property within a redevelopment plan gets noticed if there is a change to it?
And while you're...
Property owners, correct, the property owners, thank you.
And while you're adding that, Jeremy, I'd like to ask a quick question since we're on that subject. What about for a tax abatement? When someone is building a development in, in an area, uh, isn't there supposed to be community involvement in that before a tax abatement comes before the council?
No.
No?
No.
I know, I was just asking since it was notification. When we get to it, I'll ask it again, that's all right.
Well, not necessarily, you know, there's a, there's a planning board process for site plan and through that process, the public is notified oftentimes about these projects, but it's not tied to the abatement process.
Okay.
Candace, didn't we say the other night that the eminent domain section is supposed to come out of this?
So, I know that there's been some discussion on this regarding eminent domain, so this plan had always had eminent domain in, in it, but we all are on the same page that eminent domain is to really only be used as a last result, resort. And it, it, it's not an automatic trigger for eminent domain. It can only happen, uh, through a process. When you enable it through this plan, that process can happen at the JCRA, but the, that's part of the reason why the JCRA still has represented, representatives from this body as a part of its board. So, if there was a piece of property that for some reason the council did not want acquired by eminent domain, they could send their representatives from this body to that board and say, no, we're not gonna do that. So, it's not an automatic thing, just because they're on the map as a part of this plan, that that property can be acquired by eminent domain, if that makes sense.
So, Jeremy?
I, I understand, I understand that, but we're still creating the ability and, anyway, whatever, let's, let's let the public hearing go on.
If I could just say one other thing?
It is the public hearing, thank you, Mr. Bachner.
If I could just say one more thing? In, in response to what was said, we don't deny that we were aware of our being in the redevelopment zone. The, the problem here is we weren't included in the decision here. There are only three property owners in that particular block.
Good evening, Jersey City Council, my name is Tommy Tran and I'm the rep...
Sorry, your name?
Tommy Tran.
T-R-A-N?
Correct.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay, am I T-O-M-M-Y or?
T-O-M-M-Y, yep.
T-O-M, a single M?
Correct.
Tran, okay. Thank you.
I'm the owner at Eight Saddlewood Court and I am also the representative for 15 of the families that reside at Saddlewood Court. I would like to just publicly state that Vidal had and did come to our, uh, block and revealed his plans about a year ago. He provided us with a presentation, PowerPoint presentation, as well as his attorney answered a lot of the questions the residents there had. We believe that the building would be an enhancement to Jersey City and be more reflective of the future of downtown Jersey City. Currently, the land is underutilized and is not being put to highest and best use. You can go there to that area and you can see it. It kind, it really sticks out. The height and density of the building is not a concern because we do have other high-rise around that area such, you know, right now, we currently have the Hudson Exchange West project and the MGM project, so the building and where it's situated is not a concern to us and, and I think that it would be progressive for the city to push it forward. That's, that's our position. Like I said, I'm the representative for 15 out of the 20 families that reside at Saddlewood Court.
Good evening, councilmembers and the public, my name is Deacon Caesar Sarmiento, C-E-S-A-R, last name is S-A-R-M-I-E-N-T-O. I am the president of the Lower Port Homeowners Association comprising of 18 homeowners. We have lived in the area for 38 years and we have seen the changes happening within our area when Newport was still grassland and we have seen the high-rise buildings coming up and we are very happy for that development because it shows progress in Jersey City and the progress that's happening within our, our neighborhood. We live at block 11501, which is across the street from the MGM redevelopment, which is on block 11508. And our association, all 18 homeowners fully support this project. We are aware of what's going on with the MGM redevelopment plan. We have our quarterly meetings and this has always been discussed and we are present at the recent meeting of the planning board in these same council chambers and we are very supportive of the project because we believe that it will benefit the city tax-wise and it will benefit the homeowners in the area because it will improve the quality of the area. Thank you very much.
Wait, 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 Caesar?
Did you need something, Robert? S-A-R-M-I-E-N-T-O.
Sarmiento.
Sarmiento, yes.
Got it, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Daniel Sacardi, in regards to this redevelopment plan, uh, my history with Mr. Carter has led me to believe that he is, he does never go out of his way to inform any people that are gonna be affected in regards to any redevelopment plan until after the fact. Anything that is specifically called for under state statute, he makes sure that a small amount of people are aware of the impact it might have on their property as possible. He's done this before in other redevelopment plans and he's done this in this one. My, my point that I want to make was something that was brought up by Councilperson Osborne, and that is specifically that if there is gonna be redevelopment happening anywhere and the city council calls for the planning board to inform all the tax-paying individuals that reside in a particular area scheduled or cited for redevelopment, those individuals can be notified and they have an opportunity before the planning, uh, plan is submitted to the city council to contact their representatives and show their approval or disdain for whatever that particular plan is. Really simple, if something's gonna impact my neighborhood or particularly my property, I wanna know ahead of time, every time, and I think it is the responsibility of every member of the city council, with all due respect, to ensure that any time that Mr. Carter or any of the individuals from the planning board decide that they think that there's a good idea to be done, that the first thing starts with the informing of every taxpayer in a particular area. I've seen it happen...
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up on that because you just spoke directly to the ordinance.
That's what I'm specifically, uh, in regards to block 1, 150 blah, 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 08. Basically, what I'm talking about is every, every property owner should have been notified ahead of time, all the specifics in regard to the redevelopment plan, that's all.
Thank you.
Motion.
It's a public hearing. Folks, if you're intending to speak, it would be great if you stepped right up and formed the line.
Good evening, my name is Victor Sison, I'm a lawyer. I come here...
S-I-S-O-N, right?
Yes, sir, S-I-S-O-N. I come here wearing three hats. My family came here way back in the seventies and bought a property at 375 Manila Avenue. And my family knew how it was in downtown Jersey City when it was only filled with tenements. I also come here as the president, I as the vice president of the Philippine American Chambers of Commerce composed of businessmen here in Jersey City. And I also come here as the El Señor Presidente of PAFCOM, the Philippine American Friendship Parade, which is celebrating the 25th anniversary this year in Jersey City. Now, I have two basic reasons why I would like to endorse and approve this plan before the council. First of all, after 25 years, the Philippine Americans who were welcome as immigrants in Jersey City have realized that they are here in Jersey City to stay. They have come to realize on this 25th anniversary that the Philippine American in Jersey City is not a pathetic non-entity relegated to the shadowy corners of the streets and corners of Jersey City. The PAFCOM has realized that the Philippine American is a vital part of the mosaic that constitutes the mosaic of Jersey City. The Philippine American belongs to a vibrant, active, productive community and it wants to be heard in the emergence and building of this city that calls its home. And we know that for the first time, we have somebody who's trying to show that a Philippine American can contribute his talents, his expertise in the rebuilding of this city. And we have one of us who is the member of the Philippine American Chamber of Commerce who had envisioned to contribute and give back to Jersey City what was given to him when he came here as a, an immigrant years and years ago. And so, the question is, if this project of this Philippine American by the name of Vidal is going to be denied, the question is, where's the sense of history of the council of Jersey City? Are we going to go with the full word or are we going to really get the sense of history of this emergent migrant people who have believed that now is the time to contribute to the city of Jersey City? Thank you very much.
Let me just say at the outset, there's gonna be a certain irony, being that I'm Filipino-American. Uh, while we, thank you Judge for the, the context on the historical nature of this development, potential development, that is, but I'm gonna ask everyone who steps up to speak, to speak directly to the ordinance about the redevelopment plan, and while I know that the two can seem very interconnected, um, we ask people to speak directly to the redevelopment plan itself. Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, councilpersons. My name is Frank Molina and I'm the chairman of the PACO Agency and on behalf of the Board of Trustees in the PACO Agency, I'm here to overwhelmingly support Mr. Vidal Letis' project, who is our neighbor and our friend for many years. Uh, I know Mr. Vidal for over 25 years. I remember when he was just a desolated area, I used to get my gas there when it was a Getty Station. Later on in life, I was able to get my cars fixed there at an affordable rate. Later on, as a police officer, when I was conducting Christmas gifts for the kids, turkey drives for the community, uh, when I was doing my recruitment to help the community become police officers, Mr. Vidal was always there for the efforts that we were doing for the community on behalf of what I was doing plus what he was doing for the PACO Agency. We overwhelmingly support him as a longtime community businessman, right? He has always been very supportive of the community. He's been here for a long time, he's not a Johnny Come lately, he's been here, he's established. I think that we should at least give him the due respect that he has been with us for a long time. It sends a very good message to all the Jersey City businessmen that they too can afford to develop in this great Jersey City, this new Jersey City with all the development that is going on. It can only enhance our properties and we can continue to develop and make this new Jersey City grow even bigger. I thank you for your support.
Frankie?
Thank you, Frankie. Councilman, do you have some comment? Okay, next speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Council President and the city council and to the people who are here, I'm Reverend Willie Tangunan.
I'm sorry?
Willie Tangunan, living in Jersey City.
Uh, can you spell your name for me, I'm so sorry?
Willie Tangunan, yes, and I'm living in Jersey City.
Can you spell your first name?
Winnie.
Winnie?
Winnie, yes.
W-Y-N-N-I-E?
Uh-huh, yes, sir.
Okay, last name?
Tangunan, T-A-N-G-U-N-A-N, Tangunan.
T-A-N-D-U-M as in Mary?
N.
N as in Nancy, A-N.
A-N, yes.
Tangunan. Mr. Tangunan, you can continue.
Yes, good evening to everybody. I am standing here in support of the project of Mr. Vidal in 351 Marin, the housing project. I support the project, I support the establishment of the project because it, I believe it contains a community concern. The affordable housing within the city of Jersey City is a demonstration of a community concern, unaffordable housing. Second, the improvement of public open space for the Harshem Moscow neighborhood. The public open space is a demonstration of a community concern, the interest of the community. The physical improvements of the public right of way and the creation of landscape open space area to beautify the, 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 the neighborhood is a demonstration... space area to beautify the neighborhood is a demonstration of serving the interest of the community. And therefore, my friends, in support of the project, I express my deep concern that the project be established because of it demonstrates the community improvement concern for the interest of the people. Thank you very much and God bless.
Thank you.
Kabili Tayad, City of Jersey City. I first want to say that I think it is a shame that people are coming forward tonight talking about fairness for a person of color who wants to take advantage of making monies in our city while others have been making money hands over fist. This is why, even as president of NAACP, as deputy mayor, and even as just a resident, many of us have been crying that we need to not only have a disparity study, but have to implement something. We actually need to have a real compliance office in the city of Jersey City. Because all of this shuffling of paperwork, talking about people are getting a fair share, it is the persons of color-
Yeah, Kabili, I'm going to ask you to bring it back to the ordinance.
I'm right here, 4B.
Right.
4B. Because it's all connected. Because if we were, and I'm saying we, those of us in past appointed and elected positions, those of us in present ones, if we were implementing the kind of serious structures in place, people would not be up here talking about give a person of color a chance at fairness, equity, parity, and making some money. So, yes, ordinance 4B, principally the people who are speaking and supported this, and I support it also, but it's much bigger than just ordinance 4B. We have a comprehensive problem of racism in our city, in how we do business, how we give business, and who benefits from business.
Thank you, Kabili. Next speaker.
We're speaking to the MGM ordinance, right?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Jeremy Jacobson, J-A-C-O-B-S-E-N. I'm speaking in the capacity tonight of my, excuse me, I'm speaking tonight in my capacity as the president of Harshemus Cove Association. For those of you who don't know, that's a neighborhood association with several hundred members living between Maron Boulevard and Cole Street and between Sixth and Columbus. The MGM redevelopment plan falls within Harshemus Cove's boundaries. At our April general meeting, Harshemus Cove Association membership voted to oppose this ordinance. In relevant part, the amendment would allow for construction of a tower up to 375 feet of significant density in an already densely populated area within our neighborhood. I'm sure that the council is well-versed in the reasons why large developments such as this can present a significant hardship for residents nearby and living in the area, but I'll just touch briefly on them here. The increased population may bring taxes to public infrastructure, whether it be the sewer system or riders in an already insufficient public transit system, especially the path, which we all know can be a problem. More cars lead to more traffic and parking issues, and certain residents do lose access to light and other views they would otherwise enjoy. HCFA has nevertheless been open to talk in good faith with the relevant stakeholders, and we did discuss the community benefit bonus which was presented to us, and we did give it serious consideration.
Jeremy, we need to speak a little louder.
Oh, sorry. However, in addition to a provision for some limited public space, the bonus's main feature is an earmark for the city for certain community uses. The category that these can be used for, street scape improvements, affordable housing and open space, is very broad and not well-defined, and we're not really sure exactly what's being committed to. So after discussion, the membership determined that overall this amendment is not in our best interest as residents. Proposal gives us little certainty of what we would receive as a benefit, but we are certain that there would be burdens on the people living nearby. So we respectfully asked that the council vote no. Thank you.
Good evening, city council. My name is Jim Geist, last name is G-E-I-S-T.
Jim, what was the last name?
Geist, G-E-I-S-T.
G-U-I-C?
G-E-Eko India Sierra Tango.
E-I-
G-E-I-S-T.
Jist.
Close enough.
I got the gist.
(laughing).
Hey, go ahead.
I just came briefly because I am opposed to the MGM development, if anything more because of the density that's being proposed. The proposed development is 27 stories above what was originally approved for the area, and my concern is that the infrastructure that is in the downtown area is currently at its capacity and cannot handle the additional influx. And I cannot rely on the community benefit that has been promised by either the development or the city council.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ivan Bolswor. I did not play or speak on this, but I'm somewhat appalled that in an area that is very close to the Harlem Tunnel, we are allowing something with an capacity of 375 feet, and there's no traffic study. See, I have a problem with development agencies because you don't have to do a traffic study. We're talking about an area that is bottlenecked, and I know that neighborhood very well, living downtown for 40 years. I know it. You're talking about having, so how many, potentially, how many new apartments or condos will this have? Because you're going to be, you're talking about blocking the, really, the entrance going into Manhattan. You have, so what will we have in terms of people living in that particular area? The particular area there right now is one or two family homes, which is, it's great. But what will this cause down the road? Because, yes, this is another area, it's not my area, but I use the Harlem Tunnel too. So is it impact to me if I go into Manhattan? What would this be in terms of density of people living there, in terms of apartments? And why isn't there a, why isn't there a traffic study done? This is not just one neighborhood. There's only one Harlem Tunnel in Jersey City. It's not as though I can go down the West Side Avenue and go to the Harlem Tunnel. It's an impact for everyone. So what do we have in terms of development for the whole city? What is, what will that development bring in there? Is that 80 new apartments? Is that 300 new apartments? What is it? What does this mean in terms of numbers?
What's the question, Ivan?
I want to know, in terms of this development, what does it mean in terms of new apartments, new development there? We're talking about something that is very broad, but we're not having in terms of numbers. What does that mean? How many new people will be there? How many new cars will be there? Because you're talking about an impact on the Harlem Tunnel where everyone uses if you go to Manhattan.
This is not a proposal for the-
I understand, but you're proposing a development that down the road, there has to be a number attached to it. I mean, when you buy a house, you know how much it's going to cost. You don't say, well, it might cost half a million bucks. You should know. And you're talking about a redevelopment group in which there has to be a fixed number in terms of units. It can't be, well, regarding passing the redevelopment agency, we're going to pass this and not know what it really means.
How many stories is this total?
Stories? Well, what's the impact?
The zoning that's proposed permits a bonus of an increase of approximately 275 units.
275 units.
And it can go to approximately 35 stories. And I will say that that is smaller than the building that is permitted immediately next door, and smaller than the building that is approved and under construction immediately across the street.
And has anyone, you know, watched the traffic coming out of the Harlem Tunnel? Or am I the only one that noticed this? I mean, we're talking about something quite serious in terms, it's not like a development that's way over on the West Side that will have no impact to the rest of the city. This will have a major impact for the rest. You know, today, my husband and I, we had to go out past 109. And, you know, we were out there, and we're heading, you know, west, we go that, and you can see the traffic coming into Jersey City while we're going west, they're coming into the city. It goes on and on, and that's for Jersey City as well as into Manhattan. And I was kind of amazed, I'm now near Carney, and I see all the traffic coming into Jersey City, where the goal is to come into Jersey City and eventually get to the Harlem Tunnel. That was their main goal. And it goes on and on and on. And we're talking about putting in a building that could have a density, and like, it doesn't make sense what's going on development. Development does not make sense in Jersey City. We live here together. It's not as though what happens downtown does not affect what happens in Journal Square or the rest of Jersey City. It does, because there's only one Harlem Tunnel. I'm absolutely opposed to this as a citizen who have lived downtown for 40 years, now living in Journal Square, but I still use the Harlem Tunnel. And I think it should be low-density there, not because traffic doesn't move as it is. And I'll be very honest, I've been saying this since the 1970s, we should get rid of the redevelopment agency and we should have traffic studies done. We should know what the impact is. Because then people will say, oh, we're going to build housing for no cars. It's not the people here with the cars, it's the traffic coming in from the outside. That's the traffic.
Ivan, please-
Okay, I made my point, but the point of it is, this is an impact to all of Jersey City, and there should be some sort of analysis done with the traffic impact. It is not fair to everyone who lives in Jersey City and have to use the Harlem Tunnel. It's just not fair. Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Mark Simon, M-A-R-C-S-I-M-O-N. I live across Maron on the eastern side. I wanted to speak in opposition to this and ask respectfully and simply that the members of the council take a few steps back and reexamine the process of planning amendments to all of the redevelopment plans that impact our neighborhood, and demand that the planning department look at the city as a whole, examine all of the elements, engage all of the parties who are proximate to these developments. We were not part of any of that dialogue. This is a recurrent motif. Many of you have heard me speak the same issue before. So again, my request is very simple. I would like the council to step back, look seriously at the impact of all of the overdevelopment, of all of the particular amendments and modifications that are repeatedly pushed through in a quick fashion, too quick, and that in fact do obviate serious study of transportation, light, air, and impact, and only bow to the pressure of development and profit-making. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening, council president, council members, Charles Harrington. On behalf of Conifoli, of Conifoli, on behalf of Mr. Vidal Ledda, who is a primary stakeholder, an owner of the land within his MGM plan, I wanted to just touch briefly-
Who is the primary landholder?
Mr. Vidal Ledda.
Vidal?
D-D-A. Okay. So, I'll try to be brief, but a couple of issues that were raised before the council tonight. First, I want to address the perception that there was no notice given to certain members of the public and that they weren't part of the process. I can say to this council that I don't think I've been involved in any other amendment that had more of a community outreach than these amendments. We've been working for years on these amendments, and Mr. Ledda and myself have reached out to numerous community groups. We met with the Harshemus Cove group many, many months ago. At that time, they supported the project. We had a different community benefit, and at this time, I think they just have a little bit of a disagreement with the idea of the Newark Avenue improvements, because I think there's a schism in that community group as to what to do there. So, we, but we met with them, and we met with the Paco group, we met with the Saddlewood and Laurel Court groups. And when we had those meetings, they weren't to specific property owners, they were open to anyone. So I know the first speaker has his concerns, but I can tell you, I know my client specifically spoke to him and told him he was working on these amendments. So it's, I think, you know, with all due respect, it's a little disingenuous to come here at the 11th hour and say that I don't know what's going on. And this is part of the process that planning initiates as well. They specifically tell you, we'll work with you on the planning and zoning issues, now go to the neighborhoods and talk to them, and you can agree to disagree or you can agree. But this has been something we've been working on for at least two years. And a lot of the changes that, and a lot of the proposals that are in the plan tonight are a result of those meetings, not only with the community, but with planning and other city officials. So this certainly isn't something that is being pushed through. It's been, it's been a long, long road, and we think it's a great project for the city. So I just wanted to put that out there and just touch upon, very briefly, the eminent domain issue that was raised at the first reading and during the caucus. There is no eminent domain issue with this project and these amendments. Nothing is being proposed to condemn anything. As Mr. Farrell said, that's a process that the city would be aware of. It could only be incorporated or instituted or initiated through the JCR-A. And I submit, we have two members of the council on the JCR-A board, so they would be aware of it. So it's not something that would happen without basically the city behind it. And in that respect, I would, if that, and I appreciate the concerns regarding that issue, but if the council's concerned about that, I'd recommend that another amendment be presented after this, so that you could take it out then. Planning could initiate that, and it could be back before the council very shortly. But I don't think that that should be kind of tied in with the proposal before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you spoke already, correct?
I never spoke.
You never spoke, okay.
I stood with someone.
You stood with someone. Come on up.
I never spoke.
Come on up, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Paul Bachner. My cousin and I are the primary majority owners of that block. I heard otherwise this evening. If you go by square footage, we own the majority. I can tell you that I have never received any notice concerning the proposed development at all. I have a legal background as well. I am an attorney under the laws of New York State. I am not admitted in New Jersey, and I know when I receive notice, and I know to keep those notices. With regard to receiving notice in 2007, I regret to tell you that I am almost 65 years old, and it is very hard for me to remember what happened yesterday, let alone from 2007. But I do know I keep all records. I never received any notice. Let's be perfectly clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is it a public hearing? Is there anyone in the public who wishes to be heard?
Eric Fleming, 245 Fifth Street. I serve as the, as one of the board members of the Harshemus Cove Association, and I was the previous president, actually, that was my fourth term as president of Harshemus Cove Association. We've had several meetings with Charles Harrington, the attorney for Mr. Ledda. It's been one of the more open conversations we've had with the- It's been one of the more open conversations we've had with developers. A lot of times, it's one meeting at our general meeting and that's really about it. So, it's been refreshing to have that kind of dialogue. Unfortunately, we were presented with a community giveback for this project that wasn't legally possible. It's a damn shame because our community has been working very hard towards getting the Sixth Street Bankman turned into a park for everyone and that's where the community giveback would have gone. And obviously, we were elated to be given the opportunity to bring the funds to that end and it turns out that was not possible. Left a lot of people very frustrated, really disappointed, and we didn't really have a Plan B for what the community giveback would be. I have my own ideas, there are obviously others with other ideas. Newark Avenue Mall was brought out. That's a lightning rod right now that I don't want to touch. There's a lot of details to be worked out, but I'm here to talk from my own personal experience. I think the community giveback, whatever it turns out to be, cut it short. Well, I'm here to talk about the development though. The development is going to happen on Marin. It's near public transportation. It's across the street from a building that's going to be the same height and they're giving a community giveback around the same size. They're probably going to have to allow the height anyway because of that, because of the Silverman Project. So, it'd be a damn shame if the community didn't actually benefit from this height barriers. Thank you.
Hi. My name is John Ha and I'm speaking on behalf, specifically on the.
Hong Hong.
Ha, H-A. I'm an owner, yes, H-A. I'm an owner of Excel Real Estate and we specialize in bringing businesses to Jersey City. So, I want to talk about specifically for this project and how I applaud the planners as well as the architect of creating an open space and a retail space on the ground floor. And I envision that space is going to be something that you would see at the World Financial Center that just recently opened up where they have the outdoor space and the restaurant space integrated. I see the importance of bringing the right business to Jersey City. So specifically, you know, if you look at things like Key Food Supermarket, which I've brought into Jersey Avenue, can really transform an area. With the retail space that you have over there, I could see a cafe or a restaurant that would really open up to make that into a pedestrian plaza. That's going to be a welcoming area for that location. I look at the design of the building for Marin Boulevard, this particular project, where they incorporated the open space versus some of the other projects across the street that didn't have the open space. And I think this is really something that the planner and the architect has done a really nice job of creating. And I urge you to really support that because I think that's going to really transform the area to make that a more pedestrian friendly area that people would want to hang out or have dinner or have coffee or work out at the same location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilperson Coleman.
You have somebody stepping up. If anyone else is speaking, please step forward. Yeah.
Because if we don't see you, we don't know you're going to speak.
Come on up.
Anybody who wants to speak, stand up.
My name is Santiago Muzones Jr.
All right. You can turn that down by about 50% and start over again.
My name is Santiago Muzones Jr.
Hi, Santiago.
I can spell Muzones. Santiago, M-U-Z. N-E-S.
Resident of Jersey City for 38 years. We were here even before Manila Avenue becomes Manila Avenue. That was Grove Street. 38 years ago today, we leave our very own home, Jersey City. I have been a commissioner of human rights of Jersey City, a member of the Harshimus Association, the chairman of the Black Watch of Jersey City, and ex-president of the Catholic Action of Mary. Founder and president of the Ilu Ilu Society of America, founded here in Jersey City.
Party.
We have four kids here in Jersey City.
Paul, could you speak directly to the ordinance, please?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry. I'm here in support to the project, Vidal Vida. The man, the only Filipino pride of our race, who has a business here in Jersey City for 25 years. By approving honorable counsel, his proposed building, it will be recognition of our presence, the Filipino presence in this city. Thank you very much.
Very much.
Motion, second.
Come on. Jason, you already know the rules here, so come on, step up.
Just walked in. What are we doing? What are we talking about?
I've been here since the, sometime. I like to be quiet and let other people do their job, too.
On Jason.
The bottom line here is, listen to the people, vote with the majority of the people. If they said no, go with that. Again, challenge here is infrastructure. Keep on saying the same question, but the amount of building of the frontage of these four-story buildings is going to create a bigger challenge on our water system, waste system, and parking. If our people are not redeveloping it promptly, we're going to have a challenge again. This is in the flood zone, so we're building up more flood zones. Because again, we are, the Jersey City is paying a lot of money for overage of its water waste that goes on during every storm. So, please vote with the people, not against them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilperson Coleman, seconded by Councilperson Osborne.
To close the public hearing, Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Levaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote to close the public hearing. For final adoption, City Ordinance 15051, Councilperson Gudjuski. Councilperson Ramchall.
Before I vote, I just want to say good luck to you, Vidal. I know how long you've been working on this project and I actually had conversation a while ago with the council president on this and I support this project and I vote
Councilperson Bajano.
Aye.
Councilperson Yoon. Councilperson Osborne.
So, before I take my vote, I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to just reiterate that I want to see an ordinance requiring city notification for changes in a redevelopment plan. I think it's appropriate. That said, I do believe that in this particular instance, the developer, the person requesting the change, has done a very good job at outreach. There was a neighborhood group that was missed. However, from my perspective, it's more outreach than I've seen from a lot of, than, as compared to a lot of other projects. And secondly, I would like to say, while the eminent domain issue is not new and it's been there since the beginning and it has nothing to do with the changes being proposed, I'm not comfortable with them and I would like to see this go back to planning board with that back map removed and no properties to be put on the acquisition list and so that it comes back before council, what, four weeks from now? So, I vote yes, but I want to see this again without the acquisition map at the back.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
So, this is in my neighborhood, in front of my house. Just to address a couple of people, this is definitely not a flood zone. Been there 50 years, never been flooded. But I tell you, this is one of the few developers and one of the few administrative, you know, administratively by this crew that has actually reached out to the community lots. And that is commendable and I really do appreciate that because it give, it makes the people, the community aware of the project that was going on and for that, I'm very grateful. Mr. Vidal, I think that this project is going to be great and I vote aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
I vote aye.
Council President.
So, before I cast my vote, I just wanted to address a couple of points. First of all, on the issue, I mean, there are issues with regard to our notification, but I can say with great confidence and assuredness that the developer here, Vidal and his team have reached out to every community group in the area, spoken to them on multiple occasions. And I say that to say that, you know, this is a small developer, small-time guy, businessman, developer, local guy, and he's probably done more than any big, deep-pocketed developer has ever done to like reach out to the community in any respect, anyway. These changes are similar to what was done a couple of years ago for Lot 11507. And so, there are certain issues, if we didn't grant this as well, that would open up the city up to some liability around that as well. And we've had that issue come up in the past in, I believe it was 77 Hudson, if I recall correctly. Correct me if I'm wrong. So, with those similar changes being proposed there, the benefit, community benefit provides, I mean, I know there's been some back and forth about this, about whether it was the going to open space purposes and then for the pedestrian plaza situation and then now some talk about, now there's talk in language in here about affordable housing. I am very comfortable either way, whichever way that goes. And I will also say that we have talked at length in this council and in previous councils about the idea that the $1,500 affordable housing contribution that we often get with the tax abatements, how woefully insufficient that is and how here with each unit, each additional unit, 275 units, you're looking at a $10,000 contribution to affordable housing trust dollars potentially here, depending how ultimately decide to use it. That's $2.75 million for affordable housing purposes. I think that's great. It was discussed what the impact is. I mean, I think this is going to have a major impact and a positive one in the area. And I just want to address my companion and Kabili, who also spoke, it's not lost on me, the significance of a small-town, small developer, but a minority Filipino developer stepping forward to be able to try to build something where if we look throughout downtown and the waterfront, how there are so few minority developers or probably, I mean, I never took a survey, but if I had to guess, I think I'd be, wouldn't be too far, it'd be very, very few. So, for all of those reasons, I strongly support this project and vote aye.
Adopted by 9-0 votes, City Ordinance 15051, item 4B.
Robert, before we continue, may I just ask, indulge my councilpeople in a conversation? So, we have the charter school funding resolution on the agenda. It was brought to my attention that there are children here tonight.
I'm not worried about them.
And if, is that possible for us to do and interject that in the middle of this, our second readings?
Me?
Yep.
I'm okay.
But they want to speak. So, I know Danny also, Councilmember Rivera, there's another resolution on, what's that?
The charter school.
Are they going to come back? No, we can do it when folks get back. That's fine. Okay. Let's continue.
We have a lot of people leaving the room. Please do so quietly.
Who's that?
Three, excuse me, item 4C, City Ordinance 15052. It's an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting an amendment to the Land Development Ordinance, adding a definition for formula businesses.
Motion.
This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Mr. Byrne, could the city please explain what this means and also, I don't want to get up for the next one, explain the exceptions.
Let me grab the ordinance, Mrs. Lawson.
Yeah, what does it mean?
Please, everyone in the back, leave quietly.
Yes. Thank you all for coming. Please leave the chambers quietly. We still have to conduct business.
Please leave quietly. Make your way out quietly, please.
Okay, I just basically want to know what this is mean.
Paul, sir, this is the ordinance that the mayor is proffering that would define formula business in the Land Development Ordinance and that would be multiple locations, stores with establishments with multiple locations that exhibit standardized characteristics, logos, menu items, merchandise. This is the well-publicized attempt.
You mean having a business from a franchise?
Right.
You mean like that?
Having them consume too much of the available area of a store.
For downtown area.
Right.
Well, I'm going to say one thing. As a person who lived downtown for 40 years, many independent business people do not have their own store. They have franchise. That's their business because it supports them in terms of advertisement. Personally speaking, there are certain stores that I go to that are not in Jersey City and they may be a franchise. And I wish they were in Jersey City or downtown and according to this, they would not be. So, I don't, I don't, we're becoming a nanny state. This is free business, it's free marketing and I'm absolutely against this. It'll start downtown and it'll spread, but you can't have something in one area and say it's not going to affect another part of the city. So, I like certain franchises and they're not in Jersey City. And today, I went to two stores that are franchise, that are not in Jersey City and my God, they won't be able to come here because they are franchise.
Okay.
So, it's absolutely not. And one of them, I have to say, years ago, we used to have ISO. So, I go to many franchise stores that have, that do this. So, I can't have a franchise downtown when it used to be a store independently owned. This is absolutely ridiculous. The mayor's job is to run the city. The mayor is not to be the nanny of Jersey City. That's honestly, truthfully. Let people take care of their own business. If I want to open up another Dunkin' Donuts because that's a brand name, I should be able to do that. If I want to open up, I say Chick-fil-A, I should be able to do that. If I want to open up something that's a franchise store that is not, I should be able to do that. And I don't think anyone should be in the business of telling someone how they should be conducting their business because businesses, as you know, today fold and it's the only ones that develop in a franchise that are successful. And I think it's absolutely stupid. So, I'm not going to come up here the next time. Can you please explain the exceptions so I don't have to come up here again? But from my point of view, I think this is absolutely ridiculous. We should worry like the business people take care of their own business. They don't need advice from the mayor. Thank you.
Public hearing.
So, just to clarify, this is the definitions. So, the next one is regarding the redevelopment plan, amendments to the redevelopment plan itself. So, we're just talking about. So, we're just talking about the definition of what a formula business is.
Uh, Mr. President, I think that's very important because, um, as we all know, oh, I'm sorry, Kabili Tayati, franchises are basically small businesses. Your mother, my mother, you, me, your father, my father, may have fifty, seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars to invest in a McDonald's or Starbucks, or whatever the case may be. I think if we are saying that Kabili Tayati cannot have a monopoly, say only Kabili Tayati can't have all these Starbucks, uh, I can support that.
Kabili, I'm sorry, 'cause we have to go to the next one, and it's gonna be about formula businesses as well?
Okay.
And it's, what you're saying is more appropriate for that?
Okay, thank you, sir.
This is really just about the definition?
Thank you.
Defining it, thank you.
We have a motion by Councilperson Coleman, seconded by Councilperson Waterman. Close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
He stepped away.
Bajiano. Good.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President.
Aye.
We have an eight zero vote to close the public hearing with Mr. Ramchall out of the room. For adoption, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall's still away.
Still out of the room? Councilman Bajiano?
No.
Councilman Young?
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
LeVaro?
Aye.
We have an eight, excuse me, seven one vote with Councilman Ramchall absent. Councilman Bajiano voting no. Board D, city ordinance fifteen zero fifty-three, is an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City adopting amendments to various redevelopment plans to add formula business restrictions. Public hearing. On the ordinance, anyone else wishing to be heard?
Come right up, Aaron.
No. Wanna be the keynote speaker?
Sure, why not?
Yeah, right, go ahead.
My name is Aaron Morrell, that's A-A-R-O-N-M-O-R-R-I-L-L, and I live at sixty-four Wayne Street, Jersey City. Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Full disclosure, I've already shared some of the views I'm gonna share tonight with Councilwoman Osborne and President LeVaro. Also, full disclosure, I'm the owner of what would be defined as a formula business, which is Two Boots Pizza. However, in the case of Two Boots Pizza, I believe we're grandfathered in at this point, so it doesn't affect me, so I have no dog in this fight, as they would say. I also have an ownership in another business that would be considered a formula business, which is Blick Art Materials, I wanted to disclose that lest anybody find that out and say, oh, they have some interest. To my knowledge, Blick Art Materials has never been interested in or planned to open a location in Jersey City and would not be affected by this anyway. So, I just wanted to put those out there. Um, my background is one of, um, a lawyer. I was a prosecutor and a defense attorney, and I'm now a businessman in Jersey City. I've lived here for quite some time, and I'm here really just because I'm a very concerned citizen. I care deeply about this place I've now lived in for quite some time and invested an awful lot of time and money and civic engagement as well. I'm a co-founder of Civic JC, and on that point, uh, can you hear me, I'm sorry, and on that point, um... Okay, so, I just want for those that don't know me, to know that. Okay, so... This is, okay. Thank you, I'm glad, that's one person that will read it. Um, okay, this is essentially a solution in search of a problem. There is no problem with chain stores in Jersey City. Um, I, along with Civic JC, did a study of this, um, and in downtown Jersey City, in and around Grove Street and Newark Avenue, the percentage of stores that could be, would qualify as chain stores or formula businesses under this ordinance would be about ten percent. To get a better look at how Jersey City might look in ten or twenty years, we went to Hoboken, to Washington Street, and we found that fewer than twenty percent of businesses, fewer than twenty percent of businesses are formula businesses. So, my understanding is that the concern of this ordinance is that we're gonna get somewhere around thirty percent and we have to stop it at thirty percent. Well, even Hoboken, which is about twenty years ahead of us in development, is nowhere near thirty percent. It's at twenty percent, and if you take the banks out and you take the real estate offices out, which tend to be chains, you're down to about seventeen percent. So, there is no problem with chain stores. Now, I find myself in a bizarre situation here arguing this, because when I first heard about this, I thought, this is a brilliant idea, it's like that dish at the buffet that looks so great until you eat it. And I started thinking about it, um, and I thought to myself, this really isn't such a good idea, and I started doing some research. Not only did we find out about those numbers I just told you, but then I started to think about Brooklyn. Well, there is no limit on chain stores or formula businesses in Williamsburg, for instance, the hottest neighborhood in all of, perhaps all of New York City. It wasn't necessary to create a dynamic environment to put a limit on chain stores. These things coexist very happily, independents and chain stores. Nowhere in New York City is, was this required. I called up Hoboken, they have no limit on chain stores. So, the question is, why is this being proposed for Jersey City? Right now in Jersey City, we have a Dunkin' Donuts, that's a chain store, but we also have about five expensive artisanal coffee shops competing very happily. We also have a Starbucks, everybody is competing, but you have more independents than chain stores. GNC, it's a chain store, but you have probably four or five independents selling supplements down Newark Avenue, haven't put them out of business. Um, in the case of Two Boots Pizza, we are technically a chain store. Last time I checked, we have more competition than I know what to do with. Doesn't always make me happy, but I'm glad that Steve Kalkanidis is still in business and lots of other people still sell lots of pizza. There is no problem with Two Boots putting other pizzerias out of business, I could go on and on. And then, of course, there's the whole point that chain store, having a chain store is no guarantee of success. I just, off the top of my head, I thought of the chain stores that have gone out of business in downtown Jersey City. Pizzeria Uno, Camille's, Fat Burger, Muscle Maker Grill, Tasty Delight, all chain stores, all out of business, no longer here. The reason, one of the reasons for that is because everybody thinks chain stores are so easy to run. They're actually not. I mean, first of all, when you own a chain store, if you're a franchisee or a licensee like I am, you've gotta pay something, a royalty, off the top of your sails to the mothership, the company that created your chain store. So, chain stores are actually not always at the advantage that people think they are, they have to pay a lot more. So, the notion that chain stores are gonna come in and run mom and pops out of business is simply not true. The economics are just not so advantageous. When the mayor proposed this, he talked about San Francisco as being an example. He talked about San Francisco and Nantucket. Now, let's get rid of Nantucket right away. Nantucket is a historic town, it's virtually a museum, people live there two months a year, so let's take Nantucket out of the equation. The mayor also cited San Francisco. Well, first of all, San Francisco doesn't have the same ordinance that's being proposed here. San Francisco allows a chain store to come in and, and apply for a conditional permit if they wanna put a chain store in. Now, according to an article that I found from the New Yorker magazine, which is probably the most influential magazine in the United States, on San Francisco's chain store ordinance, seventy-five percent of the chain store applications were approved in San Francisco. That is to be distinguished from the mayor's ordinance or the ordinance that's before you, which is virtually going to eliminate the possibility that a whole group of landlords can ever rent to a chain store, because what this chain store ordinance that you're voting on says, if I have a twelve hundred square foot space, I have to chop off thirty percent of it, and only that thirty percent can be used for a chain store. It's an absurd ordinance, it's an absurd drafting of an ordinance. So, my landlord at Two Boots would have had to have cut off thirty percent of his store, and then he could have rented approximately four hundred feet to a chain store. No chain store wants four hundred feet. So, you're basically telling to a whole group of landlords that have very small spaces, you can never, ever rent to a Chipotle, to a, uh, to whatever the, whatever the chain is, to a, uh, you know, to another burger joint. So, um, you know, the, this, the way it has been drafted is nothing like San Francisco. And let me just, just cite that article and what they said in San Francisco very briefly about the, about the chain stores. So, one of the things that you would think is that these chain stores, getting rid of chain stores is gonna make things more affordable. You have mom and pops, everything's gonna be cheaper, but it's exactly the opposite. You get rid of the chain stores, as several people before me have said, and you don't have the places for people who are, you don't have places for working people to eat. So, from San Francisco, and I quote from the New Yorker article, which I have copies of and I will hand up to anybody interested, "One selling point of chain stores in a city that's losing its middle class is that they keep prices down. The neighborhood that first enacted a ban on chains in two thousand four, this is in San Francisco, Hayes Valley, has become so upscale that its own supervisor says he doesn't shop there. People who live in subsidized housing, where she grew up, blocks away, don't step foot in the expensive neighborhood stores because they don't feel comfortable there." So, this chain store ordinance, which sounds so great, it sounds like it's gonna protect mom and pops and help everybody, is only going to actually create more, a more unaffordable stores. So, ironically, you know, and let me give you just a little anecdote from today that is bears exactly on this point. I was work, I was serving pizza today at my pizzeria, and a woman came in, I will tell you why this is important, you will immediately grasp this, I promise you. A woman came into my pizzeria today and she said, can I get a pepperoni slice? And she, and I, and I said, sure, and she said, how much is that? I said, that's two dollars and fifty, plus for the added ingredient, seventy-five cents, that's three twenty-five. She walked out, she couldn't afford it. Seventy-five cents, that's probably, you know, the difference between getting a slice at my place and maybe Jeff Fabia's place down the street, or going to, um, or going to Domino's. She couldn't afford it. So, the reality is, getting rid of chain stores, or take advantage, or take, for example, Dunkin' Donuts, a, you know, a cup of coffee, there's a buck seventy. If you go to the upscale places, it's two forty. Guys, most respectfully, this ordinance will not do what you want it to do, at all. It'll make it more unaffordable. So, I'm gonna sum up, I promise, right now.
Sum it up?
There is no, let me just conclude, there is no problem, it doesn't exist, it's a solution in search of a problem. Such an ordinance as this has never been enacted anywhere in the United States, in any city, anything like Jersey City. It will limit the options, the shopping options, for Jersey City residents, those downtown who wanna be able to walk to their stores, and it's going to invite litigation from property owners, who are gonna see this city council giving them a twenty percent haircut on the value of their properties. It's inviting litigation, it's arbitrary, it's capricious, it doesn't make sense, and I would ask you to take a step back, at the very least rewrite this, but don't adopt it as written. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yvonne Lawson, what I have in my hand are cards for my family, they give me during birthdays and Christmas. Dress Barn for my husband, a chain store. This is for my son, this is actually, um, a coffee, chain store, Starbucks. Over here is Michael's. Now, I have to go to Michael's in Bayonne, New Jersey, 'cause there's no Michael's in Jersey City, I wish there was. But my favorite store, my husband knows this, is Dress, um, is Jo-Ann Fabrics. I'm a sewer, and I can sew anything, and my husband and my sons come to me to make them their little fancy holiday shirts, whether it is a Christmas shirt or whether it is an ash shirt, 'cause I love to sew. I said, I can't find this in Jersey City, but Jo-Ann is a chain store and I gotta go all the way out to Paramus. I wish I can get it in Jersey City, I really do. So, you're telling me that these chain stores are not welcome in Jersey City? And I always received, and before that, before I fell in love with Dress Barn, my husband would go to Macy's and buy me a certificate for Macy's, 'cause there's certain stores my family know I like, and these are all chain stores. This is an absolutely stupid idea. The idea is to have the business in Jersey City, and you know, it would be nice if it was downtown or in Journal Square? This way, while I'm shopping, maybe I would go to another place and pick up a slice of pizza or coffee and spread my money around even more. But today, when I went out to Jo-Ann's and whatnot, I went to their stores and I got my, I brought my, brought myself a Chick-fil-A. I said, I spent my money there, not here, 'cause as I was shopping, it was very late with the traveling, so my, my lunch was someplace else and not in Jersey City. So, when I go shopping, it's a whole day affair, and I'm not giving my money to someplace else. It's rather sad that I had to go to Bayonne to go to Michael's, which is a arts and crafts store. I'm quite sure there's many arts and crafts people downtown who would, who would like to have the competition of Michael's downtown, but they can't use it. This is absolutely, you know, it's about maintaining government, your job is about maintaining government, making sure there's enough firemen, enough cops, making sure the budget is paid. It's not to be my mother. But it's annoying, it is extremely annoying, it's the one, but you tell me where I can and cannot shop, for God's sakes. I am so sorry, but I am really annoyed that I live in a place that is probably not part of the United States of America. You tell me where I can and cannot shop, in a place that I have lived longer than some of you've been up before the council. I have to say, my husband's family's been here since the eighteen eighties, and you're now telling us where we can and cannot shop? I find this ridiculous, this is not the job of government.
Next speaker.
Kabili Tayati. I definitely support protecting our local businesses. True story. Uh, Mr. Sipperstein, been in our community, running the business for many, many years. Developers getting tax abatements, and for the record, that's a local, small, white-owned business, been in the city of Jersey City maybe seventy-five, a hundred years. And developers and real estate people would say, we are doing business with small businesses. Well, show us who that is. And they would show you home depot, loweys, and we had to point out to them that those are big conglomerates, nationwide conglomerates, and you need to be doing business with Mr. Sipperstein. Let me give you another true story. There is a person who owns at least five McDonald's in this city. It seems as though every time we break ground for a McDonald's, this particular female is always the one that benefits from the McDonald's opening up. Again, I support small businesses, but that's a monopoly. Now, we're trying to develop local antitrust laws and protect our small businesses. We need to pull this back, which I know we won't, because most things that reach second reading pass anyway. But, Mr. President, through your leadership, I think there needs to be a broad public hearing, at least two, on this particular ordinance before it goes any further. Not just in regards to our local quote-unquote business persons, but I'm also concerned about access to those businesses of color also, because not only is the local white business being... Because not only is the local white business being shut out, the businesses of color don't even get a chance to get shut out. And then there's the question of access to capital. I mean, we need to figure out how these big conglomerates that come in here.
Kabili, can bring it back to the ordinance, it's all important stuff.
That's where I'm at with the, with the formula, the definition, the formula. I mean, this formula, Mr. President, I understand what you're facing. I really do, but what I'm saying is that the formula has to look at the universe, and it has to address the question of affordability, accessibility. There's, there's a lot of things in this, as well as being against monopoly. So I applaud the attempt, I applaud the attempt, but the effort and the product are two different things. And all I'm saying is, this can come back, say, maybe in another 30 days. Just have at least one broad public hearing, it can be right here in City Hall, and let people come and talk to you, and you talk to them. That's all I'm saying.
Are you ready?
Ready.
Chester Rothman, R-O-T-H-M-A-N. I agree with my dear friend Aaron, and I, uh, I do enjoy a, um, a artisanal suite at Coco Bakery. But I'm going to speak for two things. One is, um, attempts to legislate business with rules and formulas often have hugely unintended consequences and in the end don't work. If a business serves its customers, selling the service or products they want, and they run their business well, they will be successful. If they don't serve their customers, or they don't run their business well, they will be unsuccessful. Now, from my perspective, in the early 1990s, I had territorial rights to franchise business in Bergen County. Bergen County is not an easy place to do business. Franchise business is like a uniform look of their store, but when we worked with a, a city, we gave them the look they wanted, we gave them the hours they wanted. So if it's the idea that chain stores look garish, like a Dwayne Reed, or they take up too much space, or too much illumination, that can be worked with. If the idea is that you're going to save small businesses because you keep another business out, that may or may not be true. But I can tell you some strengths that franchises have. We can negotiate better lease terms than the average individual businessman. The reason my hair looks a little weird is, uh, my guy, Martin, at Dazling, his landlord won't renew his lease. Franchise businesses, we usually get a minimum five-year lease with five, two, with two five-year renewals, so we can stick with it. The average survival rate of a franchise business is much longer. Most small businesses in this town or any other town won't, won't get to their fifth birthday. Now, if the idea is to, uh, help businesses, it's not going to work. And I think, and I'm not an attorney, although I did take a business law class in graduate school, so I know elements of a contract, I can't do it, but I know them. Uh, I'll tell you what I see. I, I grew up in the Midwest, so like, until I got healthy, about 80% of my diet was, uh, red meat and cheese and, and dairy. I like a hamburger once in a while. I don't like certain companies, but I do like Smash Burger. So let's assume you put this law in place, so Smash Burger can't come in, so I go, "Great, I'm going to do a copycat Smash Burger." Well, I can guarantee, I can't guarantee it, but in my mind, I can guarantee it, that some lawyer at Smash Burger is going to say, "Jersey City's a hot city, we're reading about it, we can't afford to let them close us out, because 10, 20, 30 other cities will close us out." So I'm sitting there as a small businessman, trying to open a business, thinking, "These guys are going to sue." And my Smash Burger, if they win, is going to go down the tubes, because I can't compete with them. I think you're going to chill a lot of businesses even opening, on the fear that these chain stores, you want to keep out. They're not going to sit still for this. They're not going to sit still for this, because they can't afford to let it happen in Jersey City and Charlotte, North Carolina, and Orlando, Florida, which is about the same sizes. They can't, they can't afford to do that. So I would suggest that some more thinking goes into it. One of my thoughts in terms of small businesses, the vast majority of the city council, as one of the, has no real business experience. There's a few, uh, no, I didn't say best, I didn't say, it, but, you know, it's a problem. And I don't know, I don't know what went into this, I don't know what hearings were held, I don't know whose opinions you got, but I think there are second, third, fourth, and fifth order iterations of what could happen, that could come in backfire and end up in a lot of litigation that's going to tie the city up, cost the city money, and shield people from opening similar businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mike Selender, S-E-L-E-N-D-E-R, 159 Jewett Avenue. This ordinance, to me, sounds like a solution in search of a problem. I don't think we have a real problem with chain stores in the city, and I don't think Jersey City is exactly a shopping meta either. So by limiting, by limiting businesses, um, is not a good idea. And I would hope the council would be more cautious about this kind of an ordinance. You know, if there isn't a problem, don't try to be preemptive like this, because it may have a lot of unintended consequences. Thanks.
Thank you.
It would be a stupid ordinance. It's a waste of time for it to be second reading. The only thing that I have to say is, hopefully, after tonight, it will be all over. I would have liked to have seen the name, the author of the suggestion to do this and legislate this, to be right next to the ordinance, because it's a dumb idea, it doesn't do any good whatsoever to anybody in the community. Thank you.
I do see the--
Gus?
Yes.
You can back up into, you know, Journal Square.
All right, okay. This is actually, I wanted to know whether Newark Avenue extends up to Journal Square, okay? And I do see here that, uh, the Newark Avenue is listed in the original copy of the ordinance. I don't know how far the Newark Avenue gets extended on this one. Number one, uh, can someone clarify this to me?
I, I don't know what you have there, so--
No, in the original resolution, if you look at the ordinance, 15.053, that is, all the street names are listed here. One of them is Newark Avenue. I wanted to know how far the Newark Avenue goes on this. So where, where does it start and how far this ordinance--
The boundaries? You're asking what the boundaries are for--
Yeah, boundaries of--
Jeff Weyer is going to address that directly.
The formula business regulations will apply only to the Newark Avenue downtown redevelopment plan--
Jeff, 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 Jeff. Uh, look at the court reporter, uh, Maurice, Riyad's won't mind. Yeah, answer the question.
The proposed ordinance will only affect the downtown Newark redevelopment plan area, which is two blocks of Newark Avenue downtown, from Grove Street to Barrow Street. It does not extend to Journal Square.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I just want to tell you that, you know, the, many of us, the chain stores are owned by the immigrants. And when we get some knowledge that, let's say, there is a demand for pasta in downtown, what do we do? We don't know how to make pasta, but we are business owners. What do we do? We go and get, might be a chain store license, like Olive Garden, and you go open a restaurant. Right? What is wrong in that? Second thing, some of the food that's served in McDonald's or, or, uh, other restaurants, right? Where we get a dollar menu, or when the pizza, for example, Papa John's, many of us own the, these places, chain stores, and we don't know how to make pizza. There is an advantage of having a chain store. You don't need to know how to make your product, but you can still sell it, right? And it gives employment, and you cannot even buy a dollar menu anywhere else today, other than McDonald's and, uh, other Burger Kings and places like that, right? Um, Vajana gives me all the time McDonald's cards for the homeless people. Now, if, if I need to find, if I find somebody over here, I, I can't even, you know, like find the, I can't even find a shop over here. So I don't know who is suggesting this one. I would really, I would really like to know who is proposing this ordinance, first of all. From where it is coming from here, yeah?
This is a mayoral initiative.
Right? And I don't know who--
Containing--
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, I don't know who, who put this on mayor's ears, right? I really wanted to know, which developer is getting advantage of it. I would like you to go and look at it, all of this thing, because this is anti-poverty, okay?
You have to slow your speech down.
Right? Uh, this is, you know, like, anti-poverty, right? This is anti-poverty, and people cannot afford to buy many of restaurants, you know? And people do move around, and we have a serious problem, right? We can't find if anything less than a dollar coffee in downtown, whereas we can find, you know, like, a 50 cents coffee in MLK area, right? And this is an issue of, you know, imbalance, and I hope, you know, this doesn't pass. And I hope you look into it and consider all of us, including the immigrants, and, you know, don't take away our opportunity. This is a country built on immigrants, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep, we got one more.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. But anyone that is going to make a statement or, or wants to publicly speak, can you please come online?
Okay, Jeff, you're up.
Jeff Kapilis. Is that loud enough? Uh, question.
Can you hear closer to the microphone, Jeff?
Okay. I'm actually too, too low. Is that better? Okay. Uh, this is going to be instituted throughout all the redevelopment plans of downtown Jersey City, or--
We indicated Newark Avenue between Grove Streets--
No, 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 that's, Robert, that's not--
Jeff, please speak.
The proposal will amend most of the redevelopment plans downtown, is a map--
Uh, which illustrates which redevelopment plans are to be amended and which redevelopment plans are not, or portions thereof. So it's, in general, it's the redevelopment plans, uh, surrounding the historic districts in from the waterfront.
Would that also include the, um, Liberty Harbor North, Newport?
Uh, Newport, no. Liberty Harbor North, yes.
Okay, um--
There's a list of 41 redevelopment plans that are to be amended, that are part of the ordinance.
Forty-one. From a real estate point of view, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of statements made from business owners, community activists, that, this is really not that much of a problem. Um, Ms. Osborne is the one who's going to be most affected by this ordinance, and it's also the one area that has all the amenities in Jersey City, that people from all over the city come down to, to shop. You know, just from a strictly business point of view-- It's a bad idea to restrict business. And I think the intention of the ordinance has some merit. I just don't believe that in the real world--
Oh, okay.
--it will work. And especially for a lot of the development that gets approved, where, like the gentleman who is going to develop that 35-story building, he puts into a formula of what he's going to get as revenue. And then he goes out and sells it to institutions to build his property. By limiting his ability to lease to whoever wants to be there, and especially a chain that is something that a bank, a pension fund will like to see in a new development, and lend money, harms what we've been trying to do in Jersey City for the last 40 years. I think this is a press release kind of ordinance. It sounds good, it'll make good press, and in the end, in a few years, it will be, it will basically be voted out of existence, because the business community will suffer from it. And who you're trying to protect, the small mom and pop business owners, really won't benefit from this. They will not be protected, because landlords will still want more money in very prosperous areas, and the small mom and pop stores will not be able to afford it. What's the next step? Do we have rent control on retail? So I know that this is going to get passed. I know that the political, um, emphasis is to put this through. It is a mistake, and you'll be readdressing this in the near future or the far future. Thank you.
Thank you. How about hearing?
Good evening, this is M. Wolf, E-M-M-E-W-O-L-F.
Wait, did you get it? Proceed. M-E, okay.
Wolf, W-O-L-F.
W-O-L-F, thank you.
I think this ordinance has good intentions, and that it defines a particular means of protection, but I think, as written, there are certain issues that we need to consider. Uh, I've been living in Jersey City in Magnolia area of town for a couple of decades now. I lived there before, um, the earthquake, as we call it, or what we would call 9/11. But I was also there in 1993. So as a two-time World Trade Center survivor, living in Jersey City, watching Jersey City become what they call today the Sixth Borough, but the growth in terms of how it has transpired because of the businesses that were brought here, because of what it was seen as an accessory to Manhattan, uh, being very proud of that, watching the neighborhoods grow, watching the business grow, watching the opportunity come to Jersey that it hadn't had in decades. A very moving. The foundation of all those businesses has been mom and pop businesses. The foundation of our country today depends on small business, most of them mom and pop. Companies that hire between five and 17 employees, by the hundreds, by the thousands, they actually create the fabric of our economy. And it's good to protect them. But we can't protect them in an infrastructure that allows one type of business, or one group of business, to intervene and refrain another group of businesses from sharing in the prosperity. There is a definite need to protect our small businesses, because in the end, in every situation, from California to right here in Jersey City, chain stores have come in and they failed, and they failed primarily because when one chain store starts competing with another chain store of the same franchise, McDonald's on one corner, competing with McDonald's on another corner, they fail. It will be, and it has been, the small mom and pop business who will, who will look at that space, find a way to pay the rent, and open some business. The minorities in this community are doing it, they need help, but others have done it well. I remember living, uh, on Newark Avenue near Magnolia, when the Filipino community came in and converted that entire area into what we call Little Philippines today. As a Marine Corps vet, be serving the Philippines, uh, it was quite unusual to walk down a street in the United States and be able to eat the bread, the ponon. And the same has happened across our city. So although this ordinance appears to set aside for protection purposes a group of businesses-- So although this ordinance appears to set aside, for protection purposes, a group of business, inherently what it does, it refrains everyone from having an opportunity, because in the next round, who will we, we block in order to preserve? I have no doubt that small businesses will find a way, as they always have. But in the name of business, for them, and for those who will come and those who follow, this ordinance, as it's written, really defeats their ability to compete in an open marketplace. Landlords will raise the rents, that is true, and small mom-and-pops will suffer, but they will find a way, as resilient as they are, to come back and restore. So I think our focus with an ordinance like this should be to spread the wealth, to equalize the wealth, so that there's more opportunity for everyone. BJ's has not conquered the world. Amazon.com has not conquered the world. And in the end, through convenience and resiliency, small businesses will make their mark. So in terms of this ordinance, I ask that you vote against it, and find a better way to promote the small businesses that are trying to make Jersey City what we want it to be. Thank you.
Second. Public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by Councilman Rivera. Close the public hearing. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
He stepped away.
Councilman Bajiano.
Aye.
Gunn.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
I would just like to say that...
It's a closed public hearing.
Oh, aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed eight-zero. The final adoption of Ward D fifteen zero fifty-three. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
He stepped away.
Councilman Bajiano.
No, I don't believe the government has a right to tell businesses what can open and what can't. And Jeff, just to tell you, Journal Square will overtake downtown in the next five years.
Coming back to you, Councilman Ram Chao, this is the, uh, item four D.
Aye.
Gunn.
You know what, as a small businessman, this is the most unreasonable idea I ever heard that. I think that this kind of idea is a possible from the dictator or communist country. But, you know, from my heart, I cannot accept this ordinance, but they have a good side. They have a good side. It's a very bad idea, but they have a surprise side, you know what they mean? Thank God, this is only to downtown. Maybe this is a good opportunity to, to rest of the area in Jersey City, to open the chain store. So even though by reasonable idea, I have to say no, but I say yes to go to creative, new approach to rest of the area in Jersey City. Thank God, let me tell you, come to Jersey City, hype. They have a beautiful main street, safety street, good neighborhood, I'm telling you. And the rent is a half of the downtown. So please, if anybody interests change to, come to Jersey City, hype. Thank you. So I vote aye.
Vote yes.
Yes.
There you go.
Councilperson Osborne.
You're welcome, Councilman Young, you're welcome. Um, so, to me, this is not a simple issue, um, and so it can be boiled down as simple, but it's not simple, and, and planning knows this, because we've had meetings about it, and I have some concerns. But before I kind of voice my concerns, I will say that I think the, the fact that these are being done in redevelopment plans is, is telling. It's not happening in R1, R2, neighborhood, commercial. It's happening in redevelopment zones. And, and the reason why that's important for folks to understand is because in the vast majority of these redevelopment zones, people, the, the landowners have gotten super favorable zoning, right? So what used to be two, three, four stories, and now you see thirty stories, I think it's completely reasonable for the city to come back and say, this is the type, this is the type of store we want to have in this area. It's a give-back, um, to the community, for the type, the, the feel for the community that we want to have in exchange for the zoning you've got. I don't feel sorry for the, those landowners, to be, to be honest with you. Um, and, and it is, and it is true, it is true that, um, large landowners expect, um, they prefer really stable rent, and formula businesses provide more stable rent, they're on twenty-year leases, so it's not this perfect market that you, that one might assume that it is, where things are just happening so quickly. These are very long leases, so I just, I just kind of want to say that to kind of set the ground. That said, I do see some issues with the current legislation. In particular, thirty percent of the ground floor, um, won't work for some of the smaller property owners, because they can't divide it into thirty percent, and so I think that's something we need to come back and address. It doesn't affect the vast majority of these redevelopment plans, so there's forty-one, there's only a few that need to be tweaked because of that, and it doesn't, um, very well address the exception process. And anytime you don't have an exception process, the very next day, you're going to have an exception that you, that you think about. So I think those two things need to be addressed, um, and I will be continuing my conversation and planning to, to address those, um, but I will vote yes.
Yes.
Person Coleman.
I feel the same way that Councilman Young feels this time. Bring a dress bar on MLK Drive. I'm very happy with that, and I'd like a Danny Max, and I'm so thankful that Walgreens is open so I can go get my medicine after I leave the council tonight at eleven o'clock, where personal stores aren't able to stay open that late. So I'm thankful, but I agree with Young, when, if this is what the downtown community has come together, and they think that this is best for their community, and the councilwoman is with them, and they're working on it to address issues, anybody who's interested in a chain store, we have a lot of space on MLK Drive. With that, I vote yes.
Councilperson Rivera.
Uh, definitely agree, not all the time, but, you know, Michael, you even hit it in the head. It does promote the rest of the city, and, uh, good job for pointing that out. I vote aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Yes.
Council President.
So, um, the, I, I think what's been lost in the kind of the discussion a little bit is this, uh, the idea of protecting, um, the, the character of the area. And I shared this with one of the owners that, um, property owners and of a chain store, Aaron, that, um, before this, this had come to the planning board, another, um, and ultimately before the council, it has been brought to my attention, somebody had asked me, a downtown resident, had asked me about whether or not, uh, they had rumors that a large chain store restaurant was coming to, uh, the Grove Street Plaza and area around there. Um, I inquired about it at the time, and, um, I found that it wasn't the case, but that, uh, in the process of having those conversations, learned that this, um, this formula business was, uh, ordinance was being devised. And so, um, the reason I was looking into that is because, um, I agreed with the, the constituent who had approached me about this, is the idea of maintaining the character and the integrity of the, uh, a particular portion of Jersey City in that, in that regard. So, I know we made light of it, and there's some, some amusement about the idea of going down to MLK, and Central Avenue, and West Side Avenue, maybe, um, and bringing chain stores, but it's, it's designed with that in, that in mind, as well as that, it doesn't, it doesn't fit for everybody, right? So, um, this is being introduced, and, and with the idea that, um, the downtown area and certain areas, neighborhoods in fact, and redevelopment, redevelopment areas, more specifically, um, that this will protect the character, uh, and the integrity of those, those areas. We have a branding campaign that goes on, they say, "Make it yours", and we want to be able to, um, kind of own up to that, that branding campaign, in that sense, that we're, we're continuing to invite and, um, attract people who want to have that kind of entrepreneurial spirit that we want to see, um, coming over to Jersey City and then, um, igniting businesses here in Jersey City. So there, there may be, as one of the speakers said, some unintended consequences, um, and I agree with Councilperson Waterman that there, um, that there are some issues that maybe need to be addressed. Certainly, we'll closely monitor that and work with the administration to, uh, see that those things get addressed, and that, um, because all that's intended here is to have positive impact, um, economic impact for, for downtown Jersey City, as well as for Jersey City as a whole. Um, and so with that in mind, I'm going to vote yes.
We have a seven-two vote for the adoption of item four D, city ordinance fifteen zero fifty-three. Councilmembers Bajiano and Gunn voting no.
Oh, Gunn.
No, I say aye.
Hey, wait.
It's a benefit to Central Avenue and the other rest of the main streets, so I vote aye.
Apologize.
I say yes.
Eight-one, got it wrong.
Rich, I love to see these stores in the water, so I got some...
Don't start him off again.
Okay, I apologize, eight-one is the final recorded vote. Councilman Bajiano voting no, that's item four D. Councilman Ram Chao, you were added to the room when we voted on item four C. Would you care to add your vote?
I vote aye.
Sorry?
He votes aye. Before we proceed, Robert, again, um, can we talk about that ten Z twenty-six? So just, were, were, the council's going to move this resolution up on the agenda? Was there another one we want to move up?
That's the one.
Ten F, did you want to move that? Ten F and, and Z twenty-seven. Okay, so we're going to make a motion to move up ten F, Z twenty-six, and Z twenty-seven? There are specific folks who have come here to, to speak on that. But before we do that, let me just make it clear, if you came here on the public speaker list to speak on those resolutions, um, you won't get a s... I'm, I'm going to ask, we don't give folks a second bite of the apple, and to speak again at public speaking.
Motion.
Oh, you don't need to know, okay. Folks, are, are you okay with letting them speak?
Yeah, that's fine.
There's children, yeah, they're kids. If they came out to speak, I don't want to, like, tell kids they can't speak. They might, I don't know.
Jer, Jeremy, can we, can we, can we, Jeremy, can, me, I am. Can we have the, the, the kids first, before, um, just so we can get the kids out there, please?
No, 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 no.
If they're on this public speaking list...
One second, please. Councilman Ram Chao, if you vote on the four C.
Aye, aye.
Four C, city ordinance fifteen zero fifty-two, is eight-one, Councilman Bajiano voting no. We just recapped. Four D fifteen zero fifty-three.
Z twenty-six. Yeah. Fine.
Great.
That's great, great. Okay.
I know.
Folks, if I can, um, get folks' attention on Z twenty-six. Uh, the council's going to make a motion to move it up, um, as a courtesy, we don't normally move resolutions up on the agenda, um, other than, like, ceremonial stuff. So, uh, understanding that there, there are children here who, um, came, but we're going to ask that there be a, a spokesperson that speak for the entire group, and if there's more than one group, opponent or advocate, then, well, you got to have both sides represented on it, right?
Yeah.
But if, if there's only advocates, then great, one spokesperson for the advocate, if we can have that. And you can all come up together as one group, if you want to do that. You have one spokesperson?
One spokesperson.
Would you like everyone to come up?
They can all come up, if they all want to come up, come on up.
All right, can we do this quietly, please?
Yeah. Can we get, um...
Z twenty-six.
Yeah.
Motion.
Second.
Motion.
Get off the phone, get off the phone.
Margaret, Peter, children?
Easy now, okay? We have a motion to defer to ten Z twenty-six by Councilperson Osborne.
Can we read it into the record?
Seconded by Councilperson Coleman. To defer, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajiano. Bajiano. Gunn.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Can we keep the side conversation down, please?
Ben. Lavaro.
Uh, can, can we ask everyone to keep the, the side conversation over on my left side? Folks, keep it down.
Ten Z twenty-six, council members, we read the title. It's a resolution urging that the governor and the state legislature approve an equitable funding formula for charter schools. Now, the council is being very generous tonight, in that there is a group of young people, one person, one person can speak on this ordinance.
Can we, can we, can we read it into the record? Is that okay, to everyone?
One person can speak on this resolution.
Robert, I'm going to read it into the record before you have the speaker, okay? It's a resolution urging that the governor and state legislature approve an equitable funding, funding formula for charter schools. Whereas public education is a vital part of our community and democracy, and whereas public education is guaranteed to every child residing within the state of New Jersey, regardless of income or status, and whereas every student has the right to a good and equitable publicly funded education, regardless of which school they attend, and whereas the Charter School Program Act of nineteen ninety-five, New Jersey Statute annotated eighteen A thirty-six A clearly states that charter school students should receive ninety percent of ascending district's program aid, yet this year, the average Jersey City charter school student received only sixty-six percent, or approximately fifty percent if facility costs are included, of the roughly seventeen thousand dollars per student provided by the Jersey City School District. Whereas some of our top-ranking public schools are charter schools that receive less than forty percent of total funding and are at risk of closing due to lack of funding. Yet these schools serve the same demographics and level of special needs children as those educated in Jersey City public schools. And whereas the inequ, the inequitable funding Jersey City charter schools received is due to the fact that they are not eligible for the hundred fourteen million dollars in adjustment aid that the Jersey City public schools receive by the state, and whereas due to inequitable funding, Jersey City charter schools are receiving far below the adequate funding necessary to provide their students with a quote "thorough and efficient" unquote "education" as mandated by the New Jersey State Constitution. Now therefore be it resolved that the municipal council of the city of Jersey City does hereby request that Governor Chris Christie and state legislature create a more equitable funding formula for charter schools. It is essential that charter schools receive the funding guaranteed by the Charter School Program Act of nineteen ninety-five, and now therefore be it further resolved that the municipal council shall send copies of this resolution to Governor Chris Christie, state education commissioner, and members of the Hudson County delegation to the New Jersey Assembly and State Senate. Ma'am, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, and I have to say, we really appreciate you taking, um...
Your, your name is?
My name is Hillary Battis.
Hillary?
Hillary.
Okay. Last name?
Battis, B.A.T.T.E.S.
Okay. That clock is going.
Okay. We just want to thank you again for bumping this up. I know the parents here really appreciate it. On behalf of... On behalf of the entire group of charter schools here in Jersey City, I want to thank you, Councilman LeVaro, for bringing this to the attention of the city council, this critical resolution that will impact the lives of every Jersey City taxpayer, as well as, and most especially, the educational development of the thousands of Jersey City children that these charter schools serve. It is imperative that this educational crisis be brought tonight to the city council and the citizens of Jersey City. How can charter schools take their rightful place among the educational options offered to Jersey City children when our charter schools remain so severely underfunded? These same educational options are provided to children in charter schools throughout the state of New Jersey. Why should Jersey City charter schools be singled out to receive insufficient funds? We know that these inequities are the result of the accounting formula, which seems at best convoluted. I've been an educator at Soaring Heights Charter School for eight years, as well as a resident and taxpayer of Jersey City. I know that Soaring Heights and the other charter schools here tonight are highly cost-effective. We have been doing more with less since 1997. However, there is a point at which providing the first-class education we are currently known for will no longer be possible. For example, these impending cuts will slash Soaring Heights' budget by $100,000. This amount does not seem like much compared to the billions spent on education in New Jersey today. And Soaring Heights is by far not the hardest-hit charter school in Jersey City. There are others whose funding has been even more dramatically diminished. All of the types of schools in Jersey City offer our taxpayers' choice. When these systems work together, they inspire each other to improve. When this happens, everyone wins. However, without equitable funding, none of this is possible. It is in the best interest of this city to provide true educational choices for its citizens. What happens here tonight must only be a beginning. It is my hope that I have helped you to recognize the dangers of such inequity and how not just Jersey City charter schools are affected, but all Jersey City residents, and they're highly invested in turning this situation around and bringing this to the attention of the powers that be. You can make this happen by joining with us, supporting this resolution that seeks to help every taxpayer in Jersey City and every child in Jersey City. Thank you.
You.
Thank you.
Council members, let's vote on 10Z 26. Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
How can you say no to these kids?
Councilperson Ramchall.
Aye.
Folks, folks, the council's casting its votes.
No, the opposition is not.
Oh.
You're on the speaker's list?
So, are there other opponents? Because we suggested that a group, if there's opponent, that you represent all the opponents, as opposed to like-
Being pretty formal.
Yes, he should be entitled to speak if, on this.
The whole notion that-
favor, we'd like to get a little bit of your remark on the public record.
All right, okay.
Speak under 100 words a minute.
Okay, okay.
Run the clock.
Right into the microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you could all have a seat while Mr. Wahid speaks. Run the clock, Robert. We ran the clock with the others as well. So go ahead.
We have given in Jersey City more money to charter schools. Our taxes this year has gone up in 2.2 million dollars, and we are paying 5.5 million dollars more to charter schools, right? There's always, we have given more money to charter schools. And we need to fix our public schools. There's no one stopping this, you have to go and study in the public schools. Our roofs are leaking, our-
She can hear you.
Louder? Okay. Our roofs are leaking, and we need money over there in public schools, and there has to be a balance. We are paying more money to charter schools already, and these charter school entities, some of them are for profit, they're not controlled. I understand this, you study, right? And look at the profile of the student, they don't represent whole of Jersey City. Certain pockets only they represent. So it is fair that the estate funding remains as it is, or in fact, no one is stopping them to go back to public schools. Please do not take away money from public schools. I hope you'll consider this again. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, let's continue with the vote call.
To vote, Councilman Kudjuski.
Aye again.
Ramchall.
He says aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
I just want to say that charter schools are public schools, and- And if we have a public school being funded at half the rate, if regular Jersey City public school, normal district public schools get $17,000 a student, then we should be giving a lot more than 8,500 a student to charter schools. They are educating our children, and they deserve equitable funding from the state. Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
This is difficult for me because I believe in a good education. My dilemma is, if charter schools are doing so great, to me, they seem to be a deviation from public school, because if they're doing so great, then why isn't the public school doing the same thing? If they give equal money, they should be doing the same thing. Every public school should be operating like a charter school if they want to receive the same money, to me. There's a difference in public school and private school, and to me, charter school seems to be more on the private part, that Jersey City is funding private school to provide great quality education to our children instead of correcting the issues that's wrong with public school. That's the way I feel. So I would have to abstain, because I will never say no to a quality education. I will never say no to the children receiving whatever they need, but I'm mixed with this. I think that all the money should go to public school, and they should fix the public school system so that it produces what charter school is producing. I abstain.
Council, Councilman Rivera, please.
Folks.
First lesson we learn is respect, right? Respect people while they're speaking. Councilman Rivera.
I'll abstain.
Councilperson Waterman.
Um, this is a, this is not an easy decision, but this is what I believe. I believe when it comes to a child's education, I believe a parent should have a right to make their choice. Why we have charter schools now, because there was a problem in our public schools. But the children should not suffer because there is problems in the public school. Me as a parent, I would want my child to get the best education. Why should my child have to wait till something is fixed? So as a parent, I understand that you want the best education for your child. So I do support public, private, and charter, because I believe the parent should have the right to make a choice until the government can fix the problem. So I vote yes. Yes.
Council President.
So, I'm 100% supportive of this, uh, this, this solution and this advocacy. I think, with all the respect to my colleagues who abstain on that charter schools, as Councilwoman Osborne said, charter schools are public schools. No doubt about that, they're public schools. They do more with less in many cases, and then there are some that are good, and there are some that are bad, and the ones that are bad often get shut down, and that's not normally the case when we have bad public schools as well. So, I think the problem here in this, this, this fight around education is that we keep looking at this as a zero-sum game, that if you get some more money, that somehow you're taking it from someone else. And that's not the case. That's not the case, okay? So, these are children who are all in public charter schools, deserve equitable funding around this, and people aren't even saying to get them up to 100% or even the 90%, which is the legislative requirement, they just want to get past the 40% and 50% thresholds that are there right now and be able to be, be able to provide the kind of continued quality education. So, stand with you on this, advocates, and if, whatever else we can do to send a message home to Trenton, we'll stand with you to do that. I vote aye.
10Z 26 has been approved, 7-0-2. Abstentions by council members Coleman and Rivera. 4E, City Ordinance 15054, it's an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City amending and supplementing Chapter 345 zoning, Article 4, fees, deposits, and inspections, Section 345-32, non-refundable application fees of the municipal code. Very simply, this ordinance provides that if a development is market rate and affordable housing, only the, the fees are only waived on the affordable housing component. This is a public hearing, is there anyone wishing to be heard? Motion first by Councilman Rivera. I'm going to give Councilperson Osborne, who got my other ear, the second, to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote. For the final adoption of City Ordinance 15054, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the final adoption of City Ordinance 15054, Item 4E. Item 4F, City Ordinance 15055, an ordinance supplementing Chapter A 351, executive orders and ordinances of the Jersey City Code to create the new classified position for environmental engineer number one. It's a public hearing on the ordinance. Any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Jason Burke, how many environmental engineers titles we have now? Is this a new, completely new title?
This is a new title, and there is one individual in it.
Was there any other person in there before?
No.
So this is a brand-new title. I knew that an individual had retired from the city in that department, Department of Public Works, and had, was doing that on the side. So this is now going to be an official title, civil servant acquired position?
Yes.
And would this individual be working with the Environmental Commission?
The individual is an employee of the Division of Architecture and Engineering in Traffic, and I would assume that the Environmental Commission will be part of that person's responsibilities.
Okay, that'd be very good, because again, I've been a proponent for that for five years, only took Mayor Healy five years to realize they needed it, and hopefully it's more active than it was then. Thank you very much. And how much is that position going to be costing the city of Jersey City?
I don't know the salary off the top of my head, but I would say 70,000.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Public hearing on the ordinance.
Ivan Bosso, I have one question. Would this person be involved in the brownfields of Jersey City? So if I were to contact him about clearing up a certain thing, will he have the information on brownfields?
Then I'm not sure, I'll have to ask his supervisor.
Well, I'm going to email you about that tomorrow, because as you know, with the MLK, I want to know about the brownfields easier.
Okay, no problem.
So, okay, thank you very much.
Daniel Sicardi, will the person be qualified and certified by either the state or the Fed, that is, the Federal Department of Environmental Protection, or the State Department of Environmental Protection, as knowledgeable in areas of remediation and in areas of environmental protection?
I don't have the person's resume in front of me, but-
I'm not talking about a resume, I'm talking about prequalifications in order to fulfill the responsibilities of a person in that position. If you go to a doctor, the doctor has a medical degree. I mean, it's the same type of criteria.
Mr. Sicardi, address the council, please.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, forgive me. That was not meant out of disrespect.
What's the question?
Uh, my question was, what are the qualifications that that individual fitting into that position is going to have, in order for me to know that the person that is in that position is qualified to handle the responsibilities? What type of education?
Do we have a job description that we could share with him?
Not in front of me, but the individual, you know, went to engineering school, specialized in environmental training, so that's, I know right now.
This is a civil service title, correct?
It is a civil service title.
Are standard job descriptions for these, these positions? We can pull that up for you and get that to you.
Thank you.
Motion, second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Osborne. To close the public hearing, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote. Close the public hearing for the final adoption of City Ordinance 15055, Item 4F. Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the final adoption of Item 4F, City Ordinance 15055. Onto Item 4G. City Ordinance 15056. An ordinance authorizing the city of Jersey City to lease city-owned property at 1315 Linden Avenue through the Jersey City Incinerator Authority.
Motion.
Public hearing on the ordinance.
Oh, Jesus Christ. Just going to ask some simple questions. Can't help it if other people were speaking on other topics who are very, very interested.
Wait, 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 you're too close and we can't hear you.
All right, question. With this proposal, you're authorizing property, is there any exchange of capital from the JCI to the Jersey City? How is this, how is this lease working? Is it, is it a financial lease, or is it a lease of just an agreement?
They are occupying space at the new municipal complex at 1315 Linden Avenue.
All right, now is there, they're leasing it at no fee to them, to us?
Every dollar the Incinerator Authority gets, it gets from the city, so it wouldn't be wise for us to give them-
A dollar a year.
The money that we ultimately be paying.
All right, so basically, it's, 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 it's this agreement saying that they can use the property and they will provide the services to the city of Jersey City.
That is correct.
And question, is the, JCI, did JCI independent, or is it under, what?
It's an autonomous agency, the JCI.
And so, the challenges we had years ago, it was supposed to be concluded or involved with the DPW, where it's, where it's cutting back? Is there any savings from this, from this union? with the DPW, where it's cutting back, is there any savings from this union?
It doesn't have really anything to do with this ordinance.
All right, I'm off target, thank you very much, all right, God bless.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Got you, ladies have it.
We have a motion by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Osborne to close, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the close of the public hearing for adoption, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Ram Chao, you still here?
Yeah, I am.
Bajano.
No.
Come up here and join us.
This property should have been a police academy, we've been asking for it for the last fifteen months, and it's a shame what the city's doing.
Councilperson Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have an eight-one vote for the final adoption, voting no, Councilperson Bajano. Onto item 4H, 4H is city ordinance 15057, an ordinance authorizing the City of Jersey City to execute a lease agreement with Harwood Corporation for twenty parking spaces located at 808 Povonia Avenue, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Jason Berg, what city agency will be receiving these twenty leased parking spaces?
This is a renewal of the prior lease for the Police Department employees up at Journal Square.
Of Journal Square, okay, thank you very much, and how much would that be?
Hundred and twenty dollars per month, per spot.
Okay, and is this a one-year, how many years is this?
It's one year.
One year.
It's a renewal from the prior year, so we're just renewing it.
Just renewing it, okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Motion.
Second. Was he?
We have a motion by...
Coleman.
Councilperson Osborne, I give you the second, Council President.
What's that?
For the public hearing.
Sure.
Close the public hearing, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote to close for the final adoption of item 4H, city ordinance 15057, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
I'll tell you why, very simple, we sold 8 Erie Street where we had free parking, now we're paying for parking in all different places, and we're paying a fortune up in Journal Square to rent a building, we never should have sold 8 Erie Street. I vote aye, because I wouldn't want to hurt the people.
Councilperson Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of city ordinance 15057, item 4H. Item 4I, city ordinance 15058, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the financial agreement for a senior citizen rental housing project constructed by Padua Court Urban Renewal LP, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, New Jersey statutes annotated 40A:20-1 et cetera. The public hearing, Mrs. Ballser.
Ivan Ballser, this is St. Anthony's Grammar School, which was turned into senior housing in, basically in 1993, if I remember, ninety-two or ninety-three, so what changes are we made, the abatement is, should be almost over, what are the changes to it?
It's allowing them to deduct their utilities, which has been a common practice, but was neglected to be included into here the last time we voted on it, so it's a cleanup item.
You know, I just want to say that my late mother had to pay for her taxes and her utilities, you know, some people pay for everything, and some people get a free ride, and my mother, when she passed away, was eighty-seven years old, and had to pay the constant water and the constant this, you know, I mean, it appears as though, all these new developments always have new people, we tend to be favoring the newer people coming in at the expense of the people who've been here for a very, very long time, like my late mother. You know, I understand seniors want housing, but we're not doing anything for anybody else in there, so either they can deduct their, you know, their utilities, why can't we have that for everybody else who's paid taxes to the city? You don't know what income they have, if they own a property. When will this abatement be over, by the chance? Excuse me, someone up here, when will it be over? Yes, yes.
What's the question?
When will it be, it's almost, the abatement started around, I believe, nineteen ninety-three, remember when that happened?
It's a thirty-year abatement, it started in nineteen ninety-four, so...
Ninety-four, okay.
It'll end roughly in twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I hope it's not from the back forty renewal, because I'll be very honest, they only have to pay one-third of your income, so even when it expires, they're not going to pay more money to the city, the developer has to come up with more money, but they don't have to pay more money, but I'm concerned about the abatments coming back over and over and over again, and please remember, there's many senior citizens who pay full taxes to the city, including myself now, I'm over sixty-five, I pay full tax and I get nothing from it at all, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, can you sit up in the front row, just save us a half a lifetime?
Yeah, come on, Jason, let's go.
Now, with the utilities being paid, now, question, has the developer applied for solar panels or some other alternative energy to reduce the...
No idea.
No idea, it's something that should be done, I mean, I did propose that with the New Jersey City Utility Authority, which was knocked down, took fourteen months to reject it, something that should be done, because if it's done there, it's going to save the environment, save the people's money, and this...
Jason, come on.
I'm just, please, why?
This is not even, you're not even close to me on topic right now.
Let me say one thing, I only speak for one minute, and I can get a lot done.
On topic?
On topic, even if I'm off-topic, I'm still on topic, thank you.
Motion, second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Osborne.
Coleman.
Coleman.
Yes, I took it back.
To close the public hearing, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
He stepped away.
Waterman.
Aye.
Aye.
We have an eight-zero vote to close the public hearing for the final adoption, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
He's still away.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro. We have an eight-zero vote with Councilman Rivera out of the room. Onto item 4J, it's 15, ordinance 15059, an ordinance approving a five-year tax exemption pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey statutes annotated 40A:21-1 et cetera, in section 304-12 of the municipal code, for property designated as block 5302, lot 2, on the city's tax map, and more commonly known by the street address of 319 Tonley Avenue. Public hearing on the ordinance, Jason Berg.
Jason Berg, again, what is the reason for the five-year tax exemption?
They're entitled to apply by law.
Excuse me?
They are entitled to apply by law.
All right, and what is, and they're applying it for law for what specific reason, are they a senior, a building, are they a nonprofit, or just asking for a...
They're building at 319 Tonley Avenue.
A building, all right, how many units?
It's a three-story building.
A warehouse, storage room.
Storage warehouse, that's right.
It's a storage warehouse, oh, and they get five years, and other people get twenty and thirty, okay, my question is, they're entitled to it, yes, and the people, the people who are paying full taxes are getting burnt, and it's understanding about taxes as a whole, this is another point, all taxes are legal, why? Because all the taxes are supposed to go to Native American Indians, it's federal law, thank you.
Motion, second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Waterman.
He said thank you.
Seconded by Councilperson Osborne, to close, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote to close for the final adoption of city ordinance 15059, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Waterman. Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the close of, excuse me, for the final adoption of city ordinance 15059, item 4J. Councilman Rivera, you were out of the room when we voted on 4I, that's from Padua Court, that would mean the recorded final vote for 15058, item 4I is nine zero. 4K, city ordinance 15060, an ordinance approving a twenty-year tax exemption for a four-story, forty-six-unit, market-rate residential rental live-work project located at block 17301, lot 11, and more, known by the street address of 170 Lafayette Street, to be constructed by 170 Lafayette Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, New Jersey statutes annotated 40A:20-1 et cetera. Go ahead, Mrs. Ballser.
Okay, I would like to know, is this similar to what was passed in the Heights area next, actually near, I would say, Union City, there was a live-work project, but that one was fifteen years, is that a similar development?
I'm personally not aware of that other project.
There was a live, there's a live-work area project that was done probably eight years ago, seven years ago, perhaps, because I know people who live there.
I mean, I don't know.
Are you familiar with that?
I don't know the project you're referring to, but...
It's up in the Heights, it's, I forgot the name, I think it's, I don't remember the exact address.
That was on the city line, the old...
Near the city line, yes, is this a similar...
The old laundry.
Yes, so is this similar to that project there, the live-work?
What it's similar to, Charles will tell you what it is.
Yeah, for the record, Charles Harrington, I don't know if it's similar to that, I can give you a brief description, it's an existing building that will be renovated and rehabilitated, and the units will be work-lives, so it will be open to not just artists, and anybody who wants to occupy those or use them for work-live purposes, it's located, I'd like to call it the Donut Hole within the Whitlock Quarters Development, so it's, I can tell you, it's a very important project to get not only this project off the ground, but the HMFA Whitlock Quarters Project, because we're working with them to try to get both projects moving.
Okay, thank you very much, the reason why I brought this up, because I remember when the city council previously passed the live-work project in there, and I knew people who lived in there from Jersey City, now, I'm not going to mention people's names, because that will be inappropriate in a meeting that's being recorded, but if you want to ask me privately, I'll tell you their names, both of them were my former neighbors, and I know them pretty well, one person has a six-figure income and has a house on the shore, yet they qualify to live in the live-work area, the other person, it's very well-known, has a six-figure income, I can't mention his name lie there, but offline, I will tell you him, he lives there, too.
That's not on this ordinance.
But the point of it is, is that it appears, the qualification is either you live in Jersey City, or you work in Jersey City, and it's called to be, quote, affordable, and yet I personally know that these people have a great deal of money, and I...
This is market rate.
Market rate.
Market rate.
Okay, market rate, but the point of it is, it's also an abatement, in which the city council, a few moments ago, was talking about, we need funding for the board of ed, and you're giving away your board of ed funding right here, with this particular ordinance.
Ballser, it's at 170 Lafayette.
Okay, I understand that, but the same thing was said about what was up in the Heights, a very depressed area, I distinctly remember that particular ordinance, because I remember when it was thrown way up here in the Heights, because the Heights has not had that many abatments at all, so that one, I really remember.
Thank you.
Okay, I personally want to say is that I don't agree with this, you're talking about your board of ed funding, and this is your board of ed funding right now going away, and from what I saw up in the Heights, you had some very high-end people who privately, I will tell you their names, not publicly, who lived in a live-work building in the Heights, people who have income higher than me, because I don't have a house at the shore, and they're not paying taxes to the board of eds, so I'm just basically want to say, this is an example of the city giving away their assets, this is the way the city is saying, we need to fund the public schools, and the first thing you do is this, we need to fund the charter schools, and the first thing you're doing is this, because you can't use the thing of saying the state, "fund them," and then you do something like this, which they're not paying anything at all, if I was in South Jersey, I'd be laughing at you, because you're giving away all the rate of a base and saying, "we want more funding for the charter schools," it's ridiculous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion, second.
Second. We have, I heard Mrs. Waterman make the motion, give the second to the Council President, close the public hearing, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Coleman. Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote to close the public hearing for a final adoption, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
No, because it's a twenty-year abatement, and I think we should start cutting back on some of these abatments for fifteen years or ten years.
Councilman Yun.
I vote no, and especially, we have to understand this project, over the years of long-term tax abatement, the developer get benefit of almost one-point-five million dollars, meantime, City of Jersey City, over the twenty years, losing one million dollars in the municipal service, so because of these things happen, they only pay annual service charge, ten percent of their gross revenue, I think we tried mayor's tax abatement policy almost two years, it's time to go back and review that mayor's tax abatement policy, it's about time to increase, not ten percent gross revenue, about time to increase to twelve, at least thirteen percent, other than that, this project, as I say, developer get one-point-five million dollars saving tax, meantime, City of Jersey almost subsidized one million dollars, and I'm going to tell you why those things come up, but we're going to discuss it later on, but I vote no.
Hundred percent aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
I vote aye.
Council president.
I vote aye.
We have a 7-2 vote, voting no, council members Bajano and Yun, for the final adoption of our last first reading, second reading ordinance. City Ordinance 15-060, item 4K.
Get it on table?
Yes. You want to make that motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to on table 15.
Okay, here, here is...
Second.
Wait, we have a motion by Councilman Bajano. Seconded by Councilperson Osborne, and this is to remove item 11.
No, we want to unpave it. Yeah, we want to bring it up and vote. Rich, where you honor?
This is to remove from the table the agenda, item 11A, which is City Ordinance... It's City Ordinance 15-010, an ordinance vacating a portion of West Street in accordance with the stipulation of settlement dated July 25, 2012, and pursuant to the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan. This ordinance was tabled after the close of the public hearing at the February 25th meeting. Public hearing was conducted and closed. On the motion, Councilperson Gudzuski, to remove it from the table agenda.
Just A.
Ram Char.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Laverre.
Aye.
All right, we have a nine-zero vote. Council members. This ordinance, as I indicated, was introduced on 28th of January. Public hearing was conducted and closed on February 25, 2015. I understand that it's your desire to defeat this ordinance at this time.
Just take the vote.
Councilperson Gudzuski. Councilperson Ram Char.
No, and I'd like to at this time say thank you, Jeremy, for listening to the people, and Ms. Monahan, thank you very much.
Councilman Yun.
I vote no, and Jeremy.
No.
Coleman.
No.
Rivera.
Opinion, everybody's thank you, guys, I vote no, thank you.
Waterman.
No.
And Laverre.
I'll, I'll thank the members of the community who've expressed their opposition, and then, you know, the developer and property owner. Uh, community is very not happy with this, what's being proposed, so, um, I think we need to get back to the drawing board on this one. I vote no.
Okay, this ordinance has been defeated by a 0-9 vote. Okay, council members, first member of the public tonight is Jamie Vasquez. Coleman.
No.
Rivera.
Opinion, everybody's thank you, guys, I vote no, thank you.
Waterman.
No.
And Laverre.
I'll, I'll thank the members of the community who've expressed their opposition, and then, you know, the developer and property owner. Uh, community is very not happy with this, what's being proposed, so, um, I think we need to get back to the drawing board on this one. I vote no.
Okay, this ordinance has been defeated by a 0-9 vote.
Looking smart.
Right.
Smarter.
He's so tiny, can't even smile.
Okay, council members, first member of the public tonight is Jamie Vasquez. Jamie Vasquez is on the present.
Yeah, Robert, I just want to make a motion to bring Resolution 10F. Do you have to bring it? Okay. So this is what I want to be, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Vaughn. Being that I'm the prime sponsor for this legislation on 10F, I just want to express my continued support for the LGBT Advisory Board, I still want to go with that. But I've, I've sat down with corporate counsel and some of the members of the association, and I think at this time, what we should do is, is pull this, this resolution, and I'm happy to say that, you know, we will be creating an LGBT commission by ordinance, which is actually better than the resolution, and, you know, this will ensure that the LGBT community, you know, has a seat in the government table through every administration. So, like I said, I think what we're going to do is, we're going to make sure that we put more teeth into it and make it an ordinance, and it'd be a strong ordinance.
So what are we doing, council? We're pulling it?
Yeah, we're going to be pulling it.
Going to pull it?
Okay.
Yeah, it's been withdrawn. Vern?
Sorry, Laverne.
Laverne Washington, Jersey City. I'm very upset tonight. You know, you sit here and you talk about schools, and we talk about public schools, charter schools, when crime is so high in Jersey City, and we don't focus on educating our children. They didn't took out Sharp, they didn't took out Calipris at a school, like teaching kids how to build bookshelves, and young ladies how to cook and do hair, everybody ain't going to college. But yet, we can talk about taking money, putting it here, putting it there, and then you got a bunch of young people standing on street corners, and we not doing nothing about them. I'm tired of hearing gunshots at night, on Randolph, on Arlington Park, on Communipaw, four young girls getting shot on Boxwood and MLK, and, and the police ride up and down, we got no police walking the streets, and broad open daytime, you know, come on. We passing all kind of ordinance here tonight, but who cares, really caring about our community? We need policing in our community. I don't know about nowhere else, but I know I need it on the Junction, I need to buy Arlington Park with babies, just in the park playing, and gunshots going off, they had to lay on the ground. This is, this is ridiculous. I went in the house a month ago, I told you guys about it, five minutes after I go in the house, in broad open daytime, they shooting? This is ridiculous. On Bergen Avenue, up the street from the police, Bergen and Lexington, round the corner, yeah, come on. We passing all kind of stuff, but we not passing laws for police to get out of the car and walk the streets of Jersey City. Bogiani know, when Calvin's father and Blazak and them was police in Jersey City, we have walking cops in Jersey City. We knew, I know them boys' father, they worked on Communipaw Avenue, Captain Blazak, Chopper, Bogiani, we knew the cops, there's no cops out there no more. People walk up and down and do what they want in our community. When a couple of babies get killed, then we come up with some new laws? Come on. A baby got shot, man, somewhere there, shot in court. We ain't doing all this stuff on this here agenda tonight. It's not, it's nothing there that affecting our community the way it's supposed to be. We had studies done about jobs for construction, we got a, a thing going on about small businesses, but what effect is it doing these young men standing on these street corners and these young women that don't have nowhere to work at? We got to change this. This is ridiculous. Our babies are dying out here in the street. A young man came to me, I'm sitting in the grease, he said, "Mr. Vern, I want to work." He said, "But there's no jobs out there." We go to, up there at Martin's place, it ain't working. We got guys coming out of jail, young men in the paper now, and they shooting on Boxwood Avenue, eight years ago. He stood in this council with me, I was taking him to Newark, to Boxham, he won the Junior Golden Gloves. He's in jail now. He came home a month ago, back in jail, 18 years old. We not offering them nothing. They go to jail, they not even getting their GED in there. Something wrong. I brought these kids down here, and now I'm using them to the street, because you know why? There's no follow-up. There's nothing out there for all these children. We got, we got to come with some solutions. We got to do better than what we doing. It hasn't got hot outside here. Go check the precincts and see how many gunshots been going off. Go check them, I live on the Junction, and all I can watch is ambulance going down, and police cars going, in the broad open daytime. Something's wrong with this. People, we got to do better in this city. It, it, it's ridiculous. Have a good day.
Laverne.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a class, a police academy that's graduating in June, and I was told, once they graduate, they will be on foot patrol.
I appreciate it.
Was my concern.
I appreciate you, because you know why?
And I want to share too, Laverne, I don't know if you ride the neighborhood like I do, but they're out there.
They are.
It's just that it's an overwhelming amount of, we can't put enough out there right now to solve all of the problems.
If we can solve some, two weeks ago, I took five young ladies at Ole Miss for a retreat. Last week, I took three, 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 three Carloses kids up to Heavenly Temple, they have a youth night on Thursday night, tomorrow night I'll be taking them. And, and one little baby, five years old, one minute, five years old, I took her to church on a Thursday, on a Friday, I had to go to Grand Street and get her from school, you know why? The little girl called the teacher a B, and called another teacher a bastard, five years old. You know what they're hearing, it's not everything is hearing in their house, it's on the streets when they walking by. Because everybody standing on the curb, they smoking reefer, drinking liquor, cooking food on the sidewalk on MLK Drive, and nobody cared, they shooting the dice and calling the curses in our baby's head. I'm going, brother, you ain't got a one.
Thanks, Laverne.
William Doherty.
Not here.
Dwayne Baskerville.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Excuse me. My name is Dwayne Baskerville. Um, I'm here today because, as Laverne just said, what's going on in our streets today is kind of rough. Uh, some of these kids have machine guns. Um, it's gotten to that level. Um, as you may or may not know, in 2006, we had three weeks where kids were shot and killed in the newspaper every week, and we were able to put together basketball leagues and talented fashion shows, and we had peace in Jersey City, no shots fired for 105 days. Um, what we like to do is start a spring program, uh, this Saturday at Bayside Park. We've invited all the kids throughout Jersey City, we've let them know that we're doing this to try to keep the peace, to diminish some of the violence. And what it is, is a fundraiser, um, for $17 from Stan's Sports Goods and Hoboken, we can get them, uh, excuse me, a jersey and some shorts, reversible jerseys and the shorts, and establish a, a basketball league that will last through the summer, through the spring, through the summer, through the winter, until we can get some indoor basketball courts available. Like Laverne just said, uh, some girls were shot the other night, four girls on one block, the police camera was already up in the sky when the shooting happened. So what we're trying to do is give them another option, something else to do in the community that'll try to keep them busy rather than them run around shooting each other. So we're looking to the city councils, the chosen freeholders, and everyone else in Jersey City to try to donate, uh, some funds, to get these kids some uniforms, get them some coaches, get them some water, keep them busy, keep them off the street, and try to have a safe summer. So any help that you can give us. I spoke to Ms. Osborne, she said she would be the point person for the city council, um, and the checks could be made out to the Jersey City Recreation Fund, Foundation, I'm sorry, Jersey City Recreation Foundation. We're trying to raise between $5,000 and $10,000 for jerseys, coaches, water, all those types of things. Yes, sir.
Question.
Yes, sir.
How many teams do you think you're going to have from this? How many, uh, how many individuals in terms of youth?
Yes.
Do you think you're going to have, since you mentioned 10 to, $5,000 to $10,000?
Right.
It's a lot of kids, so what's, what's your plan?
We, what we did, we estimated three teams per site at 15 sites, which is a minimum. So if you multiply 36 times 15, I don't have a calculator, one of these guys around here, but that's how we estimated at Stan's, when we got the...
Forty.
How much?
Five forty.
Five forty, and that's a low number. That's just, you know, when we do it at Bogota T, uh, we got 30, 40 kids just in Bogota T alone, little kids, and then you have the younger kids and the young adults who want to play. So to get started at 540 is a good number, and try to take it to the next level from there.
And do you have coaches?
We've got, we've got people who stepped up to the plate for this weekend, who's willing to volunteer to be coaches this weekend, and they're interested in participating, but consistency comes with funding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, city council. I want to use my time to speak on two topics, but first, I want to thank personally Councilperson Rivera and Councilperson Osborne, because on behalf of my hairstylist, who was having a little trouble with the building department getting his new space open, I reached out to them, and within 24 hours, they contacted, I think Director Cruz, and my guy's problems are solved, he's still not open yet, but he's got that problem solved, and I thank you all. And the first topic I want to talk about is on police. I've been involved in police issues in Jersey City since 2010, as Councilperson Gudzuski knows, with the Philip campaign, uh, and the mayor appointed me to be a community representative to the Jersey City Public Safety Board. I think we have a very good team under Mayor Philip with Director Shea and Chief Zaki. I've spent some quality time with a couple of the deputy commissioners, and I know three of the four district commanders, but we have a real problem in hiring. The information I have from the PD is that in the next three years, 300 officers... officers will reach, uh, retirement age. That's, and it's gonna be a little over a hundred each year. Uh, the force right now is around eight hundred officers, so that's thirty-eight percent of the force, uh, might leave in three years. We're having trouble replacing a hundred officers, and I think earlier, Councilperson Bogiano hit the nail on the head, one of the problems is we lost our own, uh, academy. And the way it's described to me, we basically have to go begging to slot our recruits in other people's academies. We also have a recruiting problem. I think a lot of the rules, regulations, or just the way things have been done have to be cleared up. Uh, I think one of the big problems is this, uh, one-year pre-hire residency requirement, which kinda makes no sense in today's market. So, I think that's something, I know the council is well aware of policing issues, I know they hear from the police department, but I just wanna reinforce that, and I thank you. Uh, the second topic I wanna talk about is, I wanna kinda talk about this in terms of a little story. Um, there was a time in America where a young man could grow up poor from a large family, say, one out of seventeen children. He could never finish grade school. He could move three hundred miles away from home to a strange city to start a new life. He could have a child out of wedlock, he could be in a common-law marriage to another woman. But he learned an important trait as an apprentice, and through his intelligence, his diligence, his desire and his dedication, he eventually became of a stature where he was known by both paupers and princes, where he could walk with equal recognition among commoners and kings. His writings impacted millions, his inventions are legend, he started two colleges, he had another one named after him, he received honorary degrees from Harvard, Yale, and Oxford. He had a major influence on philosophers, economics, politicians, and scientists, and at one point, he was considered the richest man in America. Today, that path, out of poverty, is a pure fairy tale. For two hundred years, growing up poor in America was oftentimes a stepping stone to a better life. It was for my father. Today, growing up poor in America in a challenged neighborhood is a milestone. Children growing up in challenged neighborhoods are many times more likely to drop out of school, are many times more likely to become a victim of violence, are many times more likely to end up in jail. And if they get through all that, they're many times more likely to suffer from serious illness. Poverty is a disease that never goes away, it gets transmitted from parent to child, generation after generation. If Jersey City wants to become the greatest mid-sized city in America, we have to lead the way in giving people a path out of poverty. We can't be the greatest city with fancy restaurants downtown and vacant storefronts on, on Monticello and MLK. We can't be the greatest city building high, building high rent, high rises downtown and in Journal Square while Ward F is littered with abandoned properties. But Jersey City can solve these problems. Thank you. We can become a model city, and we can lead the way, we have to do it our way, we have to dismiss the plans of the last fifty years that didn't work, and we have to find a way to make a commitment to do it. Thank you very much.
Hello, Mr. Vern. I'm okay. Uh, last time I was up here, I got chased off the podium because I was here at the wrong time. Um, but, uh, I think I'm here at the right time. I realize that nobody knows what an OFA is, although he passed it in September. And I don't believe that anybody knows what an OFA is. I'd ask you directly, but I don't think I could ask you questions, but what an OFA is, is that it's a ruse, that it enables the city council to take away my wife's property. And how do they do that? They do that by passing legislation that takes away her property. And that's, I could stretch it out a lot longer than that, but she bought the property fair and square. Jersey City didn't come in to buy it. Instead, three years after the fact, they ran to the STB to overturn the sale. And ever since then, we've been in court in Washington DC, spending tens of millions of dollars to defend this property. And it's not just for us, it's for the city. If this property becomes a park, it would be the most ludicrous waste of money that you could possibly imagine. I just wanna give you an example of how much money. When I sold the Flintco property to Metro Homes, before I closed on it, I, I was paying thirty-seven thousand dollars a year in taxes. As soon as I sold it to Metro Homes, the pilot was a million six hundred thousand dollars. One million six hundred thousand from thirty-seven thousand, and it stood there fallow for thirty-seven thousand dollars because the administration didn't care, or the administration didn't want to care. Now, I'm not talking about this administration, this one is just part and parcel of, of the problem. After Metro Homes bought the property, the pilot was one point six million dollars a year, back in two thousand and five. Does that interest you? Michael, doesn't? It interests me. Because after I sold the property, I went ahead and bought the embankment property, with the hopes of developing the property so that at one point six million dollars that Metro Homes paid for, for this property, it, it became two point one million dollars with the density ascribed to it on each block of the embankment. So, on each block of the embankment, six blocks, would be thirteen million dollars a year in taxes that Jersey City has been giving up and will continue to give up to pander to the Sixth Street Embankment and Steve Philip and his people. Now, Philip has said that there's not gonna be a park on those walls. I said that six months ago, but nobody was listening to me. But there isn't gonna be a park on that wall. You know why? It doesn't make any sense, especially when people like Murray Kushner and Charlie Kushner and, and Panapinto and Dave Barry want the property. It's, 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 it's just crazy. The total since I sold the property is a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars that's been wasted. Is that it, ma'am? That's it. Sorry, Steve. No, you're not.
LV Guzman?
Yvonne Ballser. First, I wanna thank councilmen for more than just mentioning my mother, I do appreciate it. But since I'm talking about my mother, I wanna talk about family in general. My mother's been in Jersey City for forty-four years, before that, we were from Hoboken. But I'm gonna go back even further. My mother-in-law's family's been here since the eighteen nineties, a hundred and twenty-five years, and my father's-in-law family, the Ballsters, been here since the eighteen eighties, that is, uh, a hundred and thirty-five years. So, I add up my mother, my father-in-law, and my mother-in-law and the families, we've been in here three hundred and four years, and there's been many properties, and not one of us ever had an abatement. Not one of us got a free ride from the city. And I bring this up because I'm really annoyed about the water, how you decided the mayor needed the water while we have a twenty-five million dollar surplus in the budget. And even just right now, you decided to give a gift to the seniors in Padua Housing, which is my husband's former grammar school, St. Anthony's Grammar School, so they don't have to pay, or be deducted from their rent, their utilities. But here I am, sixty-six, now legally a senior, my husband seventy-one, we still pay water, and we still pay taxes, and we don't get a break. So, I'm asking this city council, the, my mother, my, the mascarousis on my mother-in-law's side, and the Ballsters on my father-in-law's side, who never had an abatement and always paid through the nose for things, and there were many properties through the years, to refund the four point five million dollars to taxpayers in the same similar fashion that you gave those seniors a break in Jersey City in the Padua Housing. It is absolutely wrong how you're nickeling and diming the real people who've been here for a long time, but say, "Oh, we need something for somebody else." But the long-term people who built this city, you ignored through the years. You have ignored us through the years. I can tell you about Jersey City because I have pictures of my mother-in-law and her mother cut, that there was a tornado in Van Vos Park in nineteen oh one. My family experienced that because they were here. So, I know the history of this city. So, I'm asking you to do something for the real people of Jersey City who have lived here through many generations. We have many plots and holy name cemetery, 'cause we've been here that long, to return our money to Jersey City because the mayor does not need fi- four point five million dollars that you said it was okay from the water. You don't need it. Because the mayor is also giving away sixteen acres of land to Liberty Science Center, that's probably has the value of maybe a hundred million dollars if that two point four acres that we sold to the medical center was worth a lot of money. So, I'm asking for our, our money back, 'cause we've been here a long time. And by the way, when the Ballsters came to Jersey City, they actually came to St. John's Parish. So, they were there, and they actually built St. Anthony's Grammar School, and they built the church. That's how far back they go, they actually built those churches in Jersey City. So, do something for the people who helped build this city, and stop worrying about a developer and wanna bail them out.
Uh, next speaker is Edward Goodall.
The ordinance, uh, adjusting amendments to the Land Development Ordinance, adopting the West Bergen East Lincoln Park Historic District as a municipal historic district. Um, in order for the amendments to have been created in the first place, there would've had to been adequate notification in compliance with the Sunshine Law for the meeting that took place at the planning board. The public notice was only published in one newspaper. I'm just pointing at the legal division over here, because the legal division has been made aware of this already on numerous occasions. In order for the city council to take into consideration any type of ordinance that has any modifications to an existing master plan, and in order for the planning board to add anything into that master plan to submit to you, it would've had to have been in compliance with the Sunshine Law. On the record, as I've already told the law division, Brian Blazek admitted that the public notice was only put into one newspaper, and that newspaper being the Jersey Journal, that took place on the twenty-ninth. Okay? So, in order for you to go over any amendments to an ordinance, they would have to be done in a legal fashion, and they violated that when they violated the Sunshine Law. Now, I have some other visual aids for the members of the city council, because I received various bits and pieces of state statute in regards to the qualifications of the members of the Historic Preservation Commission. I am not a lawyer, the legal division is much better paid than I am, and the only thing that I wanna state is, a statute, a New Jersey state statute, is a regulation. This is a legal document from the state of New Jersey, which they're very well aware of. If this is more specific in regards to the qualifications that members of the Historic Preservation Commission have to have, which are specifically, the commissioner of the Historic Preservation Commission has to have a degree in either archaeology or history, they're not qualified to be the chairperson, okay? When they composed any changes to these regs, they had to be qualified, they weren't, okay? So, this supersedes legal statute because it's more specific in regards to the qualifications necessary. And if you wanna challenge me, you can, but the fact of the matter is, Danny, who's not a lawyer, is right. This is also another document that I think that everybody on the city council should be familiar with. These are the regulations which are supposed to govern the manner in which I am supposed to be able to rehab and renovate my home. They were written in nineteen ninety-two, and they were amended in two thousand and one. When they were done, they had absolutely nothing at all to do with my type of housing stock. Now, if Brian Blazek, or Dan Riordan, or anyone from either the planning board or the Historic Commission is going to tell me what I can or cannot do to my home, very simply, what I am going to tell them to do is provide me with state certification, because municipal certification doesn't mean squat to me. There is one person on the board who was lucky enough to have a contractor's license, who, to a certain extent, was responsible for the authorship of this document. Robert Cutter, Robert Cutter, a person who is not on my Christmas list, promised you people here that they were going to fine-tune this document, which is about thirty-five pages of bovine fecal matter, okay? Which has to deal with what you can or cannot do. It doesn't say anything about the solar cells I wanna put on my roof, can I? And why do I have to give Jersey City twenty bucks to the Historic Commission, or for that matter, anything, if I wanna put up solar cells? That's it, thank you.
Brett Shunler? Brett Shunler here?
No.
RL Williams? EMC at Brett's first inauguration is here.
Well, I don't think Brett's here because the charter school information was passed. He's probably tired, getting ready to start beloved charter school in the morning. To our very distinguished city clerk, and to all of our council people, I stand here overjoyed. This council has grown. I have watched you develop into a beautiful body of lawmakers, those who are for, those who... who are with, those who are sometimes against. You cannot become, and you are no longer, a rubber stamp. You ask questions, you probe, and you have done an exemplary job. Let me pause, first of all, to say thank you. Now, that that is out of the way, I do not understand, for the love of God, why we need another commission to study disparity. In John 3:16, it says, "For God so loved the world," and I'm going to paraphrase it, "He did not send a committee. He sent us His Son." Disparity is so easy to be rid of. This council is the most ethnic council in the history of Jersey City. You can end disparity, perhaps the mayor does not know how to find a Polish electrician. Help him out, Frank. Perhaps the mayor does not know where a Filipino window cleaning company is. Rolando, tell him. Joyce and Diane, if he can't find any housekeepers, if he can't find any window washers that are minority, you, Diane, have a whole plethora of people who came to Empire. Joyce is a pastor. She knows with her ears to the ground where people need jobs. We do not need another commission. We do not need another study. We need to start paying some tribute to vendors. True story. When the Honorable Brett Shundler was the mayor, he said, "R.L., you are the new liaison to the entire African-American community. And first, here's a check to take to the Light Rail." They want to finish building, and the city wants to contribute something. And I said, "Brett, you want me to carry the check?" He said, "Yes, just take care of it. Again, I'm on my way out of town. You're doing a fine job." I said, "Brett, you make my job so hard." He said, "Why? Brett, I'm just a deputy mayor. That's a glorified flunky. I have no signatory authority. Why am I doing this?" Sean Connally is the acting mayor. Brett said, "But, R.L., you're workaholic. You're bipolar. You can do this, that, and the other at the same time. Just do it. I'll be in Minnesota." And I remember going to the meeting, and the Light Rail said, "We were expecting the mayor with a check." I look at their plans, and I said, "We were expecting a good station at the hub." They said, "We're not going to do that. You see the one at Garfield, don't you? You see the one at Richards Street, don't you? We planned one just like that at MLK, and then we're going across Fort 40 to the Hudson Mall." I said, "You think so? We gave up three churches so the Light Rail could come to MLK. You think so?" I said, "Here's your check." And I didn't tear the real check up. I'm not that stupid. But I tore up a check and left it in pieces and walked out. They said, "Somebody get the mayor, some idiot just tore up our check." I said, "You think you can reach him? Fine." I came back to City Hall. Mad, mad messages. "R.L., the mayor is calling." Well, that's all for now. You can end disparity by just getting the job done by every minority person you already know.
Good night.
Good night.
Jason Berg.
It's a long way back to Philly, but I'll get there.
Jason Berg. Today is Wednesday, May 13, 2015. Public announcement, as of today, I am now the new president of New Jersey City University Toastmasters. And I've been a member since January 2012. And I will help continue the presidential recognition for the club. This is also my 46 year of being a community volunteer in Jersey City, which started a second place, taking care of my mother's islands there, and it was looking good. I'm also an internet host on Shake-A-Wake Radio and Stone Soup on Mondays and Fridays from 2 to 4. Now, I'm also the leader for New Jersey Coordinator for National Alliance, Constitutionalization. Excuse me, can I have a draft on myself, sir?
Me? What? Like looking at yourself?
Yeah, I love looking at myself, because other people like to be looking at me. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Just continue.
What's going on?
I take it you're viewing.
Excuse me. Now, also, government is here to serve the people, not abuse them. Every living person in America and the world are servants, are sovereigns, never citizens, which American civil servants are forcing their authority and power abuses under the color law, which is just the tip of the iceberg of the political corruption of the U.S. Code in the United States. When civil servants are told and informed of a known crime of activities and do not take action to prevent such crimes, they can be charged with complicity, and even up to the point of treason. Please hear me well, and take your oath of office seriously. Do you have the courage to swim against the muck and mire of the status quo of nothingness? In 1981, due to Supreme Court rule that policemen are not constitution obligated to protect their citizens, and the police are there to arrest criminals and do investigations. Now, New Jersey has been the biggest violator of the state sovereigns to protect themselves via the Second Amendment. I demand via the corwanto, which I gave to you, gentlemen, as example, to stand up, to begin the process to reclaim New Jersey sovereign's Second Amendment rights. Jersey City has 245,000 dwellers and 800 policemen. That's a 306 to 1. There is no way of protecting everyone in this city. Let us be free. Let it rain. Let us be able to defend ourselves. Let us live in a republic, and not the corporation of America. That is a robber baron America's male rights, something that God gave us and was forged in our Constitution. We, the people, desire to have a better government that does its best to serve the greater good of for all, not the disservice of uncivil disservants, burning the Constitution. Be forewarned and forearmed. You can only have one master. Will you follow the Constitution of the land, or follow the anarchy law of the piracy of the sea? The corporation of the United States of America is coming to an end. Stand with your people, or be standing against the war for treason. Take your action, take it seriously. It is your life, our life. You're here to serve us. Listen to the people. If you don't listen to us, don't call us anti-government. Call us patriots. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Don Wenner. Been a Jersey City resident since 1985. And on behalf of my two sons, who attend the Learning Community Charter School, I just want to thank those of you who did vote to pass the resolution earlier. I and the rest of us, we understand that it's a largely symbolic gesture, and that the action that we need needs to come from the state. But I just wanted to, I know the two people abstained from the vote, and I think it sounded like it was maybe based on a misunderstanding about the difference between the charter and the district schools, which are really the same. They are most certainly both public schools. And I think the more options that are available to people in Jersey City, the better. I don't think, it's not one versus the other, or zero-sum game. So, again, thank you for allowing us the time and passing that resolution tonight. If there's, I was last here on this spot, in this spot, four years ago. Mr. Byrne may remember, it was a snowy night in January of 2011, when a similar resolution was passed eight to zero, different council members, but same situation. And since that time, the costs of running the school have gone up, and the funding has stayed flat, or gone down in some cases. And what I fear is that my sons won't make it to eighth grade, because the school won't last. So, thank you for your help.
Mofala.
Thank you.
Good evening. Avid letter, which I'd like to read, coming from NACP, as well as the merchants in the area. And I would like the full support of the council, if possible, in resolving these problems. We, the Public Safety and Political Action Committee of the NACP, would like to have a meeting with the Chief of Police concerning drug sales going on in our business area and disorderly conduct. Police Director Shay did come to our general meeting in April, and we mentioned some of our concerns to him. Since then, the situation has worsened. We have come up with some suggestions that may curb the situation and eventually remove it from our business area. We would like to become a partner with the law enforcement in whatever way we can to improve the quality of life in our community. Our business area consists of numerous businesses, two daycares, two schools, one grammar school, and one high school. They are located within 1,000 feet from our business area, which is located between Bitterwell Avenue and Dwight Street on Martin Luther King Drive. Some of the disorderly conduct of the public is smoking marijuana and dip several times a day, every day. Last week, they had three barbecues on the sidewalk. During the weekend, they had two, during the week, on the weekend, they had two barbecues. A structing passageway for the public and consumers. They complained, and this is people that come to my store, complained of the marijuana odor and possibility of becoming high from secondary smoke. There has been a memorial for one of their friends who was killed last year up on 157 Martin Luther King Drive. This has been going on for the last two weeks with no end in sight. This brings undesirable elements to the area, which brings additional quality of life issues, drinking daily, loud music, and debris consisting of candles, liquor bottles, and trash. The memorial that I was talking about is still going on now. I believe the person that got killed, it's supposed to be, his birthday is this week. So, it's just bad for the area. Customers are scared to come to stores. They speak about it. It's just bad, period.
Did you make an appointment to see the Director Shay? Did you make an appointment, or you said, "I'm not..."
Last year, excuse me, last year, last month, Director Shay came to a general meeting for the NACP, and we spoke with him.
Okay. And nothing was followed through then?
Nothing. We spoke, well, this was before the barbecues, but we did spoke of the drug dealing at the time. And now we would like to speak to Chief and see, because we have some ideas that we would like to discuss with him and see if we can, to alleviate some of the problem, if possible.
So you are going to make the appointment?
Excuse me?
Because that's what your letter is asking, that you'd like to meet with Director Shay. So you are going to make that appointment to meet with Director Shay, right?
No, Chief of Police we wanted to meet with. We met with Director Shay last month.
So you've made that appointment already?
No, I haven't. I just wanted to know procedure, who to go see, whatever, and if we have some solution.
And ask for an appointment. That's the procedure.
Call his office.
You call his office.
Can I get a phone number?
And you ask for an appointment.
Can I get a phone number?
Just call the chief's office.
Say that again. Okay, all right. Okay.
And you know what? Follow up with us. Follow up with me. Call me.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay.
Benjamin Wilson?
Is that Big Ben?
Yeah, hey, Rich.
Big Ben.
Yo, Ben. Name is Benjamin Wilson. I'm currently the Public Safety Chair of the NAACP. I'm also on the State Public Safety Committee. I've been a resident here for 57 years. So I heard a lot of people talk about how long they lived here. I spent 18 years in the narcotic squad and another six in the gang unit. In fact, I created the gang unit. So, a lot of this talk about the walking patrols and other things, it's not really walking patrols that are the problem. The problem is more of a community-based policing. I had walking cops on my block. They parked on the corner of Arlington, they got out the car. About six little kids approached them, they looked at the kids and walked up the ocean, crossed the street and walked back down. There is no interaction in the community or with the community. That's the biggest problem. Rich, I think when you were a police officer, you lived in the city? Frank? Okay?
Yes.
And one of the probably best cops in the history of Jersey City was John Shakur. Born, raised, and lived and worked here. I've been here from day one. I still live here. I've had murderers come to my house and surrender. So this thing about police not living in a city for that one year is nonsense. They should live here for at least five years. If there's a problem with that, we have a veteran's preference and have a city preference, where there may be more points allocated to an officer who lives in the city. But too many of our cops live out of town and come in here, grab their paycheck, and run back home. Two, when you live here, you're accessible. People know where to find you, they know how to find you. As far as what Mofala was talking about on King Drive, he called me one day, I came up there, it is totally off the hook. And it should have been prevented before the hot weather got here. Of course, it's a little late to get started on it now. But barbecues on the sidewalk, you can't walk down the street. I heard someone talk about a public passageway or a public walkway down by the waterfront. You can't even walk down a public street in that area. You can't even go into the businesses or the stores. You have kids on the corner coming home from school, being approached by drug dealers. You have people smoking drugs. I was a union at MLK. At about 3:15 a day, kid goes riding down the sidewalk on one of those motor scooters or motorbikes, almost running two or three kids over. So, the problem is, yeah, we're going to start with quality of life issues, and we would love to work with the police department. I realize there's a chain of command, obviously, and we would normally go into the districts and speak to the district commanders. But to get appointments with all four district commanders, it's been almost impossible. And at one time, when we really started this, there was a shift, who was going to be where. So that created a big part of the problem. As far as Phil Zacky, I think Mofala really just wanted to let you guys know what was going on and kind of get your support for the plan. And we will definitely follow up with you. I have Phil's phone number. I have Phil's phone number. I used to work for him, so we're acquaintances. That won't really be a problem for me to reach out to him. But we just wanted to make sure that you or someone else was aware and attempting to get some type of support. I've seen the city at its best, I've seen it at its worst. I worked on 9/11, so I went back and forth across the water, so I know what it was like. But I've lived on Union Street for 56 years. And in 50 of those years, there were two shootouts. I had five shootouts on my block last year, including 31 shots fired on the corner by my house, two doors away from my house. So, we would just like to help you help us with some of these problems. And I made it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wilson, I think that what we should do is to get that meeting with those five district com...with those four district commanders, you know, ASAP. I mean, you know, I'll speak to Director Shay tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And we'll see if we can get that going as soon as early next week, so we can sit down, you know, in dialogue.
We'll be available.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I've taught with you many years, and you know the problem just as well as I do.
Yes, sir.
Getting tired of going down there trying to... Back active with us, all right?
We'll talk.
Hillary Bates? Michael Billy? Eduardo Baez? Jeff Kaplowitz? Never saw a microphone open mic.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the council for voting to introduce the ordinance, first reading ordinance, of the West Bergen East Lincoln Park Historic District. I want to say to you that come May 27th, it's an important vote, and I want to encourage you to vote for this because this is a long time coming. There's been a lot of meetings, there's been a lot of discussion. I know that the council had a major meeting on this. It was presented to the planning board that approved it. It was presented to the historic board, which approved it. It went to the state of New Jersey that approved it and thought that it was so good that they submitted to the federal government for their approval. There's a lot happening in this part of the town. Journal Square is experiencing a complete rebirth that is now heading down towards McGinley Square. And this is gonna bring all kinds of new development, all kinds of new retail, including chain stores. And what it means is, is that a historic district is there to represent and preserve our history. It's there to preserve our culture. It shows the world where we've been, where we are, and where we'll go. Council President Rolando Rivera, Councilwoman Osborne, in a previous vote, said it kind of nicely, that they're voting in favor of an ordinance to preserve the character of a neighborhood. That is what historic districts do, at the very, very base of it. It improves neighborhoods, increases value, it creates a sense of community, it shows where we've been and who we are. I want to encourage you that in the next two weeks, when it's time to vote, to please vote yes for this. It's worked in downtown. It'll work in this area of Jersey City. It'll work anywhere in Jersey City because we have so much history, and we've lost so much history over the years. Let's preserve as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Jody Drennan? Bear yourself away from your book club buddy.
That's D-R-E-N-N-A-N. June 30th, 1959. Robert and I were born three hours away from each other in the Margaret Hay.
Right, at the nursery at Margaret Hay.
So, I just, um... Yeah, I like that. Wanted to just thank everybody for sending this up to the next council meeting. As you all know, we feel very strongly about the historic designation of the West Bergen East Lincoln Park District. And I know there's been a lot of focus on the windows and the doors and the paint colors. And I want to emphasize that throwing the baby out with the bathwater is not what we want to do here. This is not really about the windows and the doors and the paint. It's about the history of Jersey City and our district. It's an important district. Jeff listed all of those who supported it wholeheartedly, and that includes the administration, our Ward B councilperson, Chico, we appreciate his work on this. And this is an important item, so we hope that you'll consider what we've already lost in Jersey City and what we're trying to preserve. So, thank you very much for your hard work and your service. One other thing I just wanted to say, because I'm listening to Laverne and Duane talk about the kids, and while they were talking, I was...you probably know I'm the president of the West Side, WISCA, the West Side Community Alliance. And we're trying to sponsor a team, a Little League team. And I asked the head of the Little League team every three days, you know, why our name isn't up on the board in Lincoln Park? And he said, "They don't have any kids." So, I can't believe they don't have any kids to play in the Little League. So, if you've got some kids, we're trying to sponsor a team, send them our way. Yeah, good.
Jody, if you want to call me in the morning?
I will.
I'll go with you. I'm leaving tomorrow to visit my sister, but I'll take care of this before I leave tomorrow morning. I'll set you up with Jerry Meyer or you could sit with Duane.
Okay. Good. Okay. Good night, thanks.
Jody, did they tell you that...
And Duane there.
Did they tell you from Lincoln Park Little League that there's no kids?
Yeah, they said that they're still trying to find kids to make a team for us.
They just had opening day and it's like...
I know they did. I know they did, but we're not giving up because we tried to get a team last year, and they said they had no kids. So, we're still trying this year.
Talk to Duane and then I'll talk to Jerry in the morning.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But they want to...
Jody? Alfred White?
Good evening, council members. First, I'd like to thank all of you for your tireless work and also for sending it further for a vote on May 27th. I live on 70 Bentley Avenue. I've lived there for about 25 years. I've lived in Jersey City for about 35 years. The historic districts that I've visited are cleaner, there's greater community involvement, more upkeep of housing, more consistency in what is built. Overall, values are well-maintained and most often rise, and they just look better. I think our area as a historic district would add to our mayor's vision of making Jersey City a world-class, mid-sized city. Historic districts attract people who are looking for upward neighborhood stability. It is documented that workmanship for historic districts is often performed to a higher standard, thereby decreasing costs in the long run. As a community, I think we can come together and identify resources that can alleviate many financial concerns of upkeep. This can help reduce some of our adversarial positions concerning a historic district. We can create a network of craftsmen and artisans that are held accountable for their work. As it stands today, one can often pay a lot of money to a contractor who sometimes is never to be seen again, who does poor work, and still charges a lot of money. A historic district helps to ensure that zoning is honored, consistent, fair, ethical, and serves the residents that actually live in the community. Zoning deviation should not be guided solely by political affiliation, imbalance in socioeconomic power, and money that does not help the community and the residents that actually live there. A case in particular that is exemplary of not having the community's best interest in mind is that of Temple Beth El's 2013 application to demolish trees and the historic Berman House at the corner of Kennedy Boulevard and Bentley Avenue. It was proposed to build a four-story, 34-unit apartment building with no green space, and the building would extend right to the sidewalks. First of all, the property is not zoned for such a building. Even if it was zoned for such, according to guidelines, the area would have only supported 17 units, not 34 units. This proposed application used the misleading guise of urban renewal, and it absolutely met no such qualification. Such a building would have a permanent negative effect on the community by diminishing aesthetics, decreasing home values, decreasing and diminishing the historic character of the block and neighborhood, increased traffic, and decrease in parking, which is already a nightmare. Neighborhood opposition to Temple Beth El's 2013 proposal to build an apartment was overwhelming, and fortunately, the application was withdrawn. Temple Beth El has now begun preparation for the demolition of the Berman House. Temple Beth El has so very, very few congregants that live in our community. If Temple Beth El's intentions are to construct outside of current zoning, we will fight tirelessly and endlessly to preserve our community. The majority of us cannot afford to leave our community, as many members of Temple Beth El did. We wish that Temple Beth El would not demolish the Berman House and be committed to helping us enhance the community in a way that would bring back more congregants that would live in our community. This would show goodwill and would also help Temple Beth El financially, as they state that they have been suffering hardships. And as we know, there are many other religious organizations that suffer financial hardships as well, and there must not be biases. A historic district could help prevent individuals, corporations, companies, developers, organizations and the like, from ruining our neighborhoods and profiting on the backs of hard-working, voting taxpayers. It could help level the playing field and give greater protection to residents that may not have the financial resources or political connections to ensure that zoning is honored. We do need not...we do not need further demolition, demolition to erase our glorious history and diminish our city. Please vote for a historic district on May 27th. I thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Markin? Billy, why don't you come over to the on-deck circle?
Counsel, thank you for attention to this subject of the historic district. In order to fully understand my position on it, I just want to make sure you know why I care so much about this. I live in the community. I was born in an...82 years ago, my mother and my father were born in this neighborhood. I don't know how many, what percentage of Jersey City can say that. But the community that I live in now is a special community. If you've visited it, you look around and you realize how special it is. I also want to mention another reason why I care very strongly about what cares in this neighborhood, also affects you, or at least three of you. I am the committee man for Ward B District 2. And as some of you know, I've worked very hard in making sure that we get good candidates and that they take...that they win their offices. And my efforts have not been limited merely to my own ward and district. There have been a number of objections, frequently very noisy, misleading, even sometimes deliberately misleading as to the negative consequences of historic districts. The argument is made that you're violating my property rights. You're telling me what I can do with my property. Yes, there are property rights. They are the foundation of the American Revolution. That's really what most of it was all about, taxation of property, the right to buy and sell property without government interference. In fact, that whole issue of property rights was written into the Constitution of the United States 10 years after the revolution. Included in those property rights were houses, land, business, even people. Yeah, people. You can read it right there. So, at some point in our history, in the middle of the 1800s, we realized how wrong that was, and we had a revolution to take away those property rights because they were counter to the values and the long-term interests of our country. I'm not suggesting that we need a revolution. I'm just suggesting that we need a recognition of the balance between property rights and the rights of the community. The right of the community is very clear. Everybody agrees. The right of the community is to help maintain itself, to protect itself from unfair and improper influences, and that's what we're talking about here. The movement for this particular historic district did not begin last week, last month, last year. It started more than 10 years ago. It was sparked by the change of the Jersey City Medical Center into the private property that is the Beacon. The community was very concerned about, was this gonna be a schlock job? As it turned out, we lucked into a very caring, forward-thinking visionary developer who has done a beautiful job of protecting that property and making it into something that's a jewel of the city. And what it also resulted in was the beginning of the West Bergen Community Alliance. And we began privately among ourselves the discussion of the need to protect our community from unethical or uncaring outside developers. So, that's where this idea came from, and it's been growing ever since then. We've had many, many meetings. The community in general is behind it. The individuals who are worried about their property, yes, they have a right to worry about their property. But I respectfully suggest that we all take a good look at what has been the consequences of historic districts here in Jersey City. Can anyone name a property owner who has suffered financial damage because they...their property did not increase in value, and they were able to recover the cost because of the increase in the value of properties in the community? I haven't heard of one. There may be, but I don't think that it exists. In general, the experience of historic districts has been that the community benefits from it. And what benefits the community, what benefits the neighborhoods, benefits Jersey City. I thank you for your attention, and I hope that we see you on May 27th voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fired yet?
Could barely tell you how to...I think that, no, I applaud you for the due diligence that you put into our ordinance 3N, which is the historic preservation. I do not live in the area, but I know people who live in that area of Ward B and Ward F. And I know some of their concerns are from being long-term residents even before I was born. And we remember Hoboken. And we remember downtown Jersey. And we remember downtown Jersey City. Because we remember when downtown was made up of working-class Italian families, African-Americans, and Latinos. Many of those families have been forced out, in fact, the majority of them. The same thing in Hoboken. I am all for progress, and I support progress. But you know, a lot of people don't feel comfortable coming to this mic and standing up because they feel that, one, their opinions will not be heard, or they will be ostracized for their opinions. But I know that there are people that live in that area that are very concerned, and they're not all anti-anything except they were born here, they were raised here, and they don't want to be a part of Hoboken and old downtown. Now, some of us remember downtown, when Lafayette stretched, the Lafayette Ward stretched all the way downtown. Some of us remember going to Ferris High School because we lived downtown. And we went to Lincoln High School because we lived on the borderline of downtown and up around the new Bergen Lafayette. As our communities are changing, and a lot of people who enjoy progress and support progress and are good community activists don't have these strong relationships with these citizens. And I say that the same way that you've taken the time to at least put Ordinance 3N up for introduction, take the time before you make the final vote in two weeks to hear, as Martin Luther King would say, "The voices of the unheard." And I mean that very strongly. The other thing I would like to do, address, is to applaud our Cooperation Council and applaud you, Councilwoman Coleman and Councilwoman Waterman. We have a commission dealing with the disparity study. But we need to quickly implement something that begins to give our city teeth. Because the racism that is running rampant in our city needs to come to a quick halt, particularly economic racism. And that disparity study helps to do that. It will not eliminate that, but it helps to do that. And like I said, I applaud all of you, but particularly, I know what Jeremy Farrell went through in taking on that leadership. So again, thank you, but please hear the voices of Don Hure.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Patrick Finn. I live on Bergen Avenue within the West Bergen East Lincoln Park Historic District. I just want to leave you with this. Take a tour of the neighborhood. Take a look around. See what you see. You're going to see some incredibly beautiful buildings. You're going to see some very well-kept buildings, buildings that have been maintained by their owners very well throughout the years. What you're not going to see is a whole lot of inappropriate development. You're going to see stuff that by and large fits in. So why are we doing this? Why are we forcing the owners of 650 different parcels to live under, yes, more restrictive rules than the rest of the city? Why are we doing it? What are we saving? What is the risk? What are they talking about? That's all I have to say at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very disturbed by getting two letters for property inspection by Department of Housing Code Enforcement. Doesn't have a cause, doesn't have a signature. I've got two letters. I'm very concerned about that language in the letter. All I'm asking for is, why is this? One property is a single family, other one is a three-family, state-inspected building. City inspects every three years, and state inspects every five years. Every time they come in, they tell me to fix something, I've always followed it. The fact that I'm getting a lecture without a signature here, I hope and pray it's not a political witch hunt. I make it very clear. I hope it's not a witch hunt. This, if you look at these kind of letters, anybody can look into, go do an Oprah and see how many letters people have got, analyze the data, do a profile analysis. I bet this might fall under harassment, that's NJCA 2C334, or extortion, NJCA 20-5. There's no property that's perfect. It's old properties, we fix it. But give me a cause, why you want to come and inspect my property. There's no reason. Can you post a notice on the premise and say that, hey, we are coming for a property inspection? No. I get it in the mail yesterday, and I am told today by press told me that, a member of the press told me that two weeks back he heard about this, that they're going to go behind you. That's fine with me. I have done nothing wrong. You're more than welcome. And now, all I'm asking you is, I am giving affidavit here, I hand over to the Council President, my properties don't have any illegal units. One is a one-family, one is a three-family. The state inspects it, I have no illegal apartments. It's very clear here. I am giving it to the Council President, I am asking him to hand over to the person who did not sign the letter at Coleman. I hope he will take care of this. Today, what is happening in the city is, I'm really ashamed. Last I checked, JCC is still in America. When you walk on the streets, we are strip-searched. Our properties, they want to come and investigate or inspect without any cause. I don't know what is going on in the city. If you really want to do this, please, follow your procedure. This can cost a lot to the taxpayers. Today, you may ignore the problem because you have power connections. Tomorrow, the tables will turn away. It may affect you also one day. Somebody else will do it if you don't stop this. I hope that Council President will look into this, and I'm giving it to you for their court, and you can take care of it. Thank you very much.
Are you David Gibson?
I am David Gibson. Greetings, Council President LaVaro and members of the City Council. I am David Gibson, a resident of Bentley Avenue. Tonight, I'm here to speak strongly in favor of the West Bergen East Lincoln Park Historic District. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind that Historic District designation is good for our neighborhood and good for this city. The plan was developed by professionals and enthusiastically endorsed by the state. Our JC Planning Board voted unanimously in favor of it. The value and success of Historic District designation has been clearly demonstrated for decades by the thousands of wonderful Historic Districts around the country. I urge you to disregard the negative, politically motivated attacks on the designation plan and the attempts to alter the proposed district map. Let me remind us all of several facts. This plan is not an attack on senior citizens, a plan to further the political ambitions of anyone, an invasion of our personal privacy. There is lots of research to prove that Historic Districting improves neighborhoods, increases the values of properties, excuse me, the value of properties, helps buying communities together, and protects buildings that are threatened by development. Our homes are generally the most expensive thing we will ever buy in our lifetimes. On streets like Bentley and others in the district, many of these wonderful homes have lasted over 100 years. But there are threats to this neighborhood. Some of the post-war decades were not kind to this neighborhood. Over the years, beautiful homes on the Boulevard were torn down. In their place, some ugly modern buildings were added to the streetscape. Demolition is again on the agenda of some in this neighborhood. Along the way, other houses were altered in ways that damaged their historic integrity and diminished the character of some city blocks. Many good, longtime residents of this neighborhood have worked hard to maintain and preserve their beautiful homes. Others are rescuing great houses that were neglected or damaged by those who didn't respect them. With the large developments planned for Journal Square, the neighborhood is on the cusp of enormous change. Let us help maintain and, in fact, improve the historic integrity of this remarkable part of Jersey City. I tell you, we need the civic tools to do that. Adoption of the West Bergen East Lincoln Park Historic District is the best way I know of ensuring that our neighborhood remains a unique and vital part of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. How are you? I almost feel like in a couple hours it'll say good morning. But I'm here to oppose against the West Bergen East Lincoln Park Historic District. I owned a home since I was 19 years old. It's not too many people I can come across that say they have been a homeowner since they were 19. And I've been owning a home now for 18 years. I know that we all have to answer to someone. We have to answer to our bills. You know, we have to answer to our jobs, our families, IRS. But I don't feel that I have the need to necessitate that I have to now answer to someone to govern me, to tell me how my house should look like, how it should be, what materials I need to use. I've had friends that lived in Historic Districts. It's not cheap. Everything has to match. Tiles, if something's used 50 years ago, so either you can't afford it, or you're forced out, or you have to move. They're saying they've been around for 10 years. Well, for the 10 years, I really would like to know where were they, the Historic, you know, District or the Coalition, when there was drug dealers and drug addicts rampant in my neighborhood, and it took me and my neighbors to actually force these people out because we would call the cops on a consistent basis and risk our lives on a line to clean up our neighborhoods? Well, we're there. I never saw any of them. Where were they? But they were around for 10 years. So I think it's atrocious. And one of the meetings, actually in Duncan Avenue, one of the churches, they actually, one of the members said, "There's a house that's, oh, that house is atrocious. It's ugly. It's a yellow color. The house needs to be changed." Who are you to tell someone that that house is atrocious, disgusting? What about your house? I wonder what that looks like. I'm just appalled that I'm being told what to do. I've done a lot for my community since I've been here, and I just refuse to have someone tell me what materials, what things I need to have in my house, how it should look like. It almost feels like it's a popularity contest. We're the cool kids. We have the latest clothes. You don't, so you don't fit in, so you need to get out or get with the program. No, you need to get with the program that we're here, we've been here, we've been doing things for our community, and you were nowhere there when bad things were happening and cleaning up our neighborhood. I don't know what you were doing for 10 years, but you weren't doing any of that to come to tell me how I live my life, how I need to do things for my community. And you telling me that I can get fined if I don't do the materials, or if things can cost anywhere from $200 to $1,000 if it's not befitting to you? You invade my civil liberties, and you're telling me that you're going to fine me? Well, if you invade my civil liberties, then I will turn around and sue you. I will refuse to have someone tell me how to do that. And that is it. And I don't approve.
What was his name, Robert?
It's number 31, EJ Centeno.
What'd he say?
Good evening, Council. Thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Eiko Johanna. I'm Puerto Rican by birthright, American by privilege, and I am quite disgusted with the proposition of a Historic District. I'd like to know the precise geographical coordinates where the West Bergen East Lincoln Park Coalition found the audacity to name any part of their plan after President Abraham Lincoln. When 150 years ago, Abraham Lincoln spoke out against the very fiber which they choose to thread. Now, I'm no witch, but I assure you that tonight, in Oak Ridge Cemetery in Springfield, Illinois, Abraham Lincoln is rolling in his grave tonight at the notion, at the thought, at the vulgarity that his name could in any way be associated with eradicating the very people he died for. When Lincoln's body perished so that faceless souls may flourish, he did it for me. Defender of diversity, equality, freedom, he did it for me. The lack of transparency and the way that apartment renters have been treated in this particular situation is downright deplorable. How can you say that there has been transparency in this issue? How can you honestly say that there's been transparency when transparency doesn't begin in doing what we have to do? Transparency begins in going beyond what we have to do to make sure that everyone is aware of what's going on, and that was not done here. Apartment renters are treated like second-class citizens. Why aren't they in on this? Don't you think that they deserve to know that the eighth most expensive Historic District in the United States of America is coming to their neighborhood? You don't think that that's, they don't need to know that? I'd like to know that when you're running for political office, when someone is at your rallies and saying, "Yes, yes, Councilwoman Rivera," when you go to shake his hand or give her a kiss or hug her, do you say, "Hey, wait a minute. Are you a homeowner, a condo owner, or an apartment renter?" You don't, right? You say, "Whoever you are, wherever you are, no matter where you come from, I'm going to represent you." Where's that representation? Where the people that rent apartments? Why are they treated like second-class citizens within their own community? I find it to be, quite frankly, a vulgar joke that Mayor Fuller had the time and dime to... to conduct a study to see which is the most popular St. Patrick's Day parade, but he couldn't have that same energy to conduct a study or survey to see what people in his neighborhood thought about what was happening. History is my favorite subject, and history has told us many things. And among them is that many people, for many, many years, to deny people their rights. Just because someone has been working on something for 10 years, they shouldn't get an automatic pass, an audit check, as though it's the right thing to do. Because many people, as you know, the 9/11 hijackers worked for 10 years to bring those towers down. Was that a good thing? They worked for 10 years on it. The past can never be more important than the present. You just named a building after Martin Luther King. But the past, his memory, the commemoration of an event, the remembrance of an individual, or the preservation of a landscape can never be more important than the present. Because as beautiful as a man as Martin Luther King Jr. was, his memory is not more important than the present. Because in the present, Barack Obama's president. The past, you cannot send the message that the past, in any form, in preservation of a building, in commemoration of events, is more important than the present, because then you are all collectively saying that it is not possible for Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu of Israel to get on a plane and head to Berlin and sit with Prime Minister Angela Merkel and talk about things about the future if the past were more important than the present. The preservation of something that has to occur here is the preservation of the people, not the preservation of the landscape. That is what you need to work on. What you, this process needs is reform, not just a checkmark. You need to make sure that everybody has been in on this process, and you cannot assure of that, neither can the West Bergen East Lincoln Park Coalition. In closing, I'd like to remind you of Abraham Lincoln's quote, which is, "That no man is ever good enough to govern another without the other's consent." And that is precisely what they're attempting to do here. Thank you. Good night. And vote no.
Michael Cylinder?
Historic districts can be one of the most divisive issues that any community can have to deal with in making that decision. Now, recently, this fall, the Planning Board passed an amendment to the Historic Preservation-
Mike, can you speak closer to the microphone?
Yes, okay. We'll see if we can bring it up. The Planning Board passed additions to the Historic Preservation Element section of the master plan, outlining other potential historic districts, which include Bergen Hill and Communipaw Lafayette in Ward F., as well as Sparrow Hill in the Heights. So you will probably have more of these districts coming before you for consideration. The problem is, we don't have a good process for doing this. We haven't created a new residential historic district other than the brief warehouse district, which got overturned, in 30 years. And we really don't have a good process in place. New Jersey is very bare bones in how it looks at historic designation. They just outline the responsibilities of the various boards, but they don't really go into detail about public notice and about public participation, et cetera. There are other communities in the country that have some very detailed laws regarding that. Connecticut, for instance, requires a 66% vote by property owners for designation for. Clayton, Missouri is very interesting. Once a district has got state and national designation, what Clayton requires is that there be a petition signed by 51% of the property owners to get the municipal process going. Then they have their information sessions, and after that, they have a ballot, one vote for property. And if that gets 66%, then they go to their planning board and their city council. So there's public participation in this. What happened with this district is that originally, planning did not plan on sending out public notice by mail to property owners until it came before the council. A number of people protested about that, and Councilman Ramshaw ensured that notice went out before the planning board hearing, rather than waiting all the way till the end. Quite frankly, a lot of the issues that were brought up to the planning board would have been more appropriate to have been discussed with Historic Preservation Commission, but because the public notice hadn't happened before the HPC hearing, those issues ended up falling on the planning board, and they were a little annoyed. Because it wasn't really, they were asked questions that really wasn't in their domain. There really should have been notification by mail to all property owners before public information sessions, and these, the plan should have been presented for feedback from the community and should have been tailored based on that feedback. What we had instead was a plan being presented and being told, "Well, we're going to be sending this to the state, and we're gonna be sending this to the Historic Preservation Commission, Planning Board, and Council, and do you have any questions?" That's not a good way of doing it. So we need to do better. If we're going to have any other historic districts coming, being proposed, I think we need to improve that process significantly. This district is very challenging in that it contains a wide mix of neighborhoods. You have Gifford and Bentley, and people on Gifford and Bentley feel very strongly about their neighborhoods, but most of the district doesn't look like Gifford and Bentley. You know, particularly Gifford and Bentley between the Boulevard and West Side, where you have some fairly large houses on large slots. That's unusual for Jersey City. It's unusual for the district. People tend to externalize their own neighborhood, and they see the whole neighborhood as an extension of their individual block. And so it works for one block, may not work for another. And this kind of a district is going to be very difficult to administer, because you have apartment buildings in some blocks. It's a fairly clean division. If you go up Gifford from West Side all the way over to Bergen, you hit a point where you just start seeing apartment buildings. Other blocks, it's all mixed up.
This arrived in my email box, a PDF, and I printed it out, and I gave it some study. I've been listening to many of-
Your name, please.
Maurice Moss. M-O-S-S? Ah, fine, yes. I've been listening to many testimonies of emotional appeal and hopefulness for what this magic of a historic district is going to do for an area in which I live in, in West Bergen on Duncan Avenue, where I came back in 2002 to live after being in New York for a while. Initially, the CFP, my mother, who worked for the Buildings Department for 34 years here. I was born in Margaret Hayden in 1950. I'm Jersey City pretty through and through as far as it goes. And I've been living in this house, and I heard earlier about the planning board, well, you know, they okayed this, and this is the same planning board, Jersey City, where I sat when a well-connected developer wanted a workforce housing put in across the way. And I watched an expert hired by Jersey City, he sworn in and tell lies about a lot across the way that was fenced in with barbed wire and owned by the Parking Authority, testifying that derelicts lived there. Nobody climbed that fence. But anything to get that slam dunk after the pro forma hearings went through, and we have this very nonhistoric multiple-dwelling unit plunked across the hydernal from our house, which has, "We want to talk about property values? We will. I will." It hasn't helped my property values, but a historic district will magically help our property values. Well, you know, and I hear about, oh, well, I've heard the proponents of this thing talk about the property values downtown. I've even heard them reach out across the country and talk about property values in San Francisco Bay and historic New Orleans, as if this has some relevance to this patchwork quilt of historic district of West Bergen East Lincoln Park, that I have to have some real skin in. I live there with my wife, and I worked on this house, and my mother had possessed that house along with her husband briefly before he died in around '93, hoping to retire there after living on Stevens Avenue for a number of years. I grew up on Claremont Avenue in Greenville. Anyhow, the appeals to emotion are nice. They're moving. There are all these hopes. However, let's look at the reality of this fact. Let's look at, what do we have to say that the property values are going to go up, and this will somehow or another compensate owners for, you know, the additional maintenance costs and the necessity of dealing with a board of people who, you know, say it has to be just so? Now, maybe, maybe I'm not accustomed to public speaking. Maybe I don't engage you folks with any professional rehearsed speech that I came to make. I may very well run out of time, but I have, before I have all this to say, but I appeal to you to look over this, because what these people found, they found Brooklyn, okay? They were looking at Class 1 housing, 1, 2, 3-family houses. Multiple-unit dwellings were really too complex to really make assessment of if they have factors like existing leases, tax structures, other reasons why they can't be considered. They considered neighborhoods, three primary neighborhoods in Brooklyn, a higher income, a middle, and a lower income, and the adjacent real estate near them. And they found that there were really significant factors, such as proximity to transportation, size of house, the quality of income of the occupants that mapped to increase of property values over time. They did, however, in concluding, and, you know, I'll cut to the chase, I'm sure all you folks are quite capable of reading what this paper says, but, you know, the board found clear evidence that after controlling for property neighborhood characteristics, market values of properties in historic districts were higher than those outside historic districts for every year in our study. We have a selection factor here. Downtown Jersey City, wonderful brownstones, not big yards. In Brooklyn, not big yards correlated with greater increase, as it happens. But finally, there is not sufficient evidence to conclude that districting itself causes higher prices or greater price appreciation. They pass without these factors. The evidence is in front of you. I say that Brooklyn is a very good analog for West Bergen. Please consider the truth of this. Thank you.
Kendall Martin here? Kendall Martin here?
Good evening, Council. It's a late hour, so I'll be brief. Firstly, thank you for introducing the ordinance. It gives us a chance to actually inform everyone that there is one meeting to attend, and we're done. I wanted to invite all of you to come and walk our neighborhood on Saturday at 12 noon along with the public. The Jersey City Landmarks Conservancy is hosting a tour, beginning at St. Peter's University and going to Lincoln Park, speaking about the history of the area. So please, on your time, I know your time is very short, but if you can make time to learn more about this district by walking it, as many of the people in the neighborhood have spoken about, please do make that. As you might know or might not know, the month of May is National Historic Preservation Month, celebrated all throughout this country. We have a very rich history throughout America, and especially here in Jersey City. And the Jersey City Landmarks Conservancy makes it a point to host many walking tours in neighborhoods that are not within historic districts, or at least not yet. We have Lafayette that is scheduled. We have a Greenville walking tour. We have a Bayview Cemetery walking tour. We have one certainly that's along the embankment downtown. But if everyone goes to JClandmarks.org, you can see the full schedule of tours. So I am brief. I want to thank you. You'll see me in two weeks, but hopefully I can see some of you on Saturday walking my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kendall Martin? Michael Shuren?
Yeah, who's going to touch on? Charlene? Just sorry, I'm not gonna be here. I'm not gonna be here this Saturday. I'm going to visit my sister in Florida, so I'll do a walk with you, but not this Saturday. All right. Thank you.
Good, Michael.
All right. I'd like to thank you guys for listening to me. I'm finishing up, I guess, over here tonight. I'm gonna keep my opinions and my feelings as much to the chest as I can and not really express what I have to think, but, you know, as you guys know, all nine of you know, last week, the former chief of police filed a lawsuit against the city. It's pretty explosive. And honestly, I really don't care about people stepping in for tickets for friends or trying to get, you know, an unnamed councilperson trying to get their friend on a 9-to-5 shift or something, and it really doesn't bother me at all. I really don't care. Or even hauling tunnel traffic, as infantile as that really is. But my issue is, is that in there, we've discovered now that a Jersey City police officer was driving drunk, going 75 miles per hour in the wrong direction in South Jersey, actually in Mercer County, and in the process of doing that, they were pulled over, they weren't arrested, but they were taken into custody. And when they were taken into custody, they resisted being disarmed with their weapon when they had 14 hollow point bullets on them. Okay? And I don't know about all of you guys, but I know a few of you have seen you at these gun control rallies, and you guys talk a lot about gun control, but I don't hear anybody talking about when you have a drunk police officer carrying a firearm with him and resisting being disarmed. And I don't hear none of you saying anything, okay? And by the way, before I cut in, Jeremy, you gotta learn to stop laughing when people are talking up here, especially about the shootings, because I seen it with Laverne, and I seen it with the guys from the Jersey NAACP. I don't know where you're from, but you guys have to take these issues seriously. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that. And the thing, because it's a very serious issue, and trust me, I don't think just the issue of the police officers, when there's an officer-involved shooting, I think it's a very serious issue when you have a lot of the violence on the street going on over here. But a lot of the violence in the street here is drug-related. I hear the NAACP, they came up here, and they want to talk about, you know, the drug dealers and whatnot. That's a problem that, of economics and a federal policy that's failed every city in this country, and there's not much you could do about it. But there's something you guys can do. You can have oversight of this police department. You can call for a federal monitor. You could do something. But what's going on right now, that this guy is, and I would like, if a councilperson up here can request that the administration disclose if this officer is still active right now, if he's still on duty, if he's still carrying a gun, does he even take a breathalyzer test before he comes into work? Because either that night, he was either drunk leaving work or drunk going into work, and it's not very clear, okay? And it would be nice if he can get some answers out of these people over here, because this is a serious, serious situation. And even more serious, since this thing has come up, what's been discovered is there's another video of this officer drinking in uniform, okay? Drinking in uniform from years ago, that he was drinking in uniform. Another thing, in the year 2000, you guys might remember, on March 6, 2014, Bishop Pickett died because he went, because the wrong, sorry about that, Mr. Byrne, because the fire department came to the wrong address. They went to Grand Avenue instead of Grand Avenue. And Bishop Pickett, his wife, they were 82, 81, and they're 50-year-old, two kids. They had a 55-year-old and a 51-year-old that died in that fire. I'm sorry about that, sir. And the thing about it is that Bishop Pickett's grandson was a man by the name, a boy, a 15-year-old boy by the name of Michael England, who was killed on January 28, 2000, on the corner of Bayview and Arlington Avenue by the same police officer and all this. And through my research, and what I discovered, in a lawsuit that cost the city $2.4 million, which you guys had to pay 1.2 million out, and the other 1.2 was paid by an insurance company for this shooting, and Frank, you should really pay attention right now, because this was right around the time you were in charge. And the thing is, is that this guy still continued on, but- And, and the thing is, is that this guy still continued on, but as discovered through his testimony, he was at a bar four hours before the shooting. Okay? We have serious questions here, and you guys are supposed to be providing oversight to the police department. I'm not saying that every cop is bad and every cop, or every cop is good. I'm saying that we have a situation here of alcoholism, and, and, and when you guys want to talk about, oh, we need to have community policing and better relationships, how are you going to have better relationships when nobody even trusts the police that they're dealing with? Okay? When they, when a police officer comes up to them, and I've heard stories as recently as the last couple of weeks, of people telling me, "Mike, there's police officers, I've smelled alcohol on their breath right this today." Okay? This is a serious, serious issue. And you guys, everyone's looking at me, huh, you know? How about we do something? How about we ask for some accountability out of the administration over here? How about we ask for some oversight from the independent source, preferably a federal monitor? Let the federal government come in and see what's going on, because let me tell you something, I've heard on a lot of lawsuits, and there's a lot of crazy stuff happening internally in the Jersey City Police Department that needs to be, including sexual harassment of the highest-ranking only-female commander. So when the women up here on this city council want to talk about women's power and women's, whatever, women's rights, why don't we talk about the one woman that's a female commander that has, that's claiming a lot of sexual harassment's been coming her way, and that the chief and the public safety director weren't doing anything? I just want some oversight. Thank you.
That concludes the public speaking. Let's elude petitions and communications.
Robert, can I ask, Jeremy, did you weigh the, all those issue?
You can't, you can't discuss that openly, it's a case, it's personnel.
We've had a very long night. It's 11:24, let's get to business. We have petitions and communications, I know 6A through 6Z, Z17. Officers' communications, 7A through G, reports and directors, 8A through C, clear to the claims and addendum number one. Councilperson Gajewski. Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Levaro?
On page 21, related to New Jersey City University, I'll abstain, and all the rest, I vote aye.
Councilmembers, resolutions. We have, everything was approved 9-0 except the abstention by the council president on page 21. 10A through 10L, notice, noting that F was withdrawn.
Robert, I just-
10A through 10L.
I did just want to let the council know, on, on 10L, I do have an open question. I'm continuing my review. We can, we can proceed with it tonight, but I may come back with-
We can hear you, Jeremy.
Is that better? Is that better? All right. So on 10L, I do have an open issue that I'm researching. We can proceed with it tonight, but I may bring a companion ordinance as well to effectuate that, that action, okay? Oh, sorry, no, you know what? I had the wrong number. Never mind.
10A through L, except F, which was withdrawn, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Levaro?
Aye.
We have 9-0 vote. Accepting F, which was withdrawn, M through T, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow?
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
President?
Aye.
U through Z3?
Sorry, guys, I just want to update, that announcement was for 10W, not 10L. That announcement was for 10W.
W withdrawn, right?
Uh, no, I'm not withdrawing it. We can pursue the 10W tonight, but I do, I may have a companion ordinance for that, okay?
Okay. U through Z3?
Bob, can we just mention that Y about the statue?
He said there'll be a companion resolution to 10W.
Yeah, 10Y. Peter, Peter Stiverson statue, I recommend that maybe the council turns that down. We get the statue back and tell the county to give it back to us and replace the foundation.
Be ready to put it anywhere for a year.
Yeah, well, they never should have taken it.
I understood that. Just gotta read the person who made that mistake.
I don't know.
Can U through Z3?
Can U?
Can U through Z3, council, councilperson Gajewski?
No on Y, yes on everything.
No on Y? Councilperson Ramchow?
I agree with my colleague, councilperson Bajano, no on Y and yes on all the rest.
Councilperson Bajano?
No on Y, yes for the rest.
Councilperson Yun?
No on Y, rest of yes.
Councilperson Osborne?
No on Y, yes for the rest.
Oh, my gosh.
Councilperson Coleman?
Same here. No on Y, yes to the rest.
Councilperson Rivera?
No on Y, yes for the rest.
Councilperson Waterman?
No on Y, yes for the rest.
Council president?
Oh, my gosh. That, we're prolonging things here. So, so what happens to this statue if it's, what's going to happen to it if it's not approved?
We're going to have to go out and do a procurement process to find out how much it's going to cost to dismantle it, bring it back, and store it, and then we'll bring something back to you guys.
I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll have to do a procurement process to find out what it costs to dismantle it and store it, and then we'll bring that back for you guys' approval to get a contract to dismantle and store it.
To store it, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Oh, my gosh.
All right, council president, your vote, sir?
Same as the- Same as the others.
Okay, Y is defeated, 0-9.
What?
U through Z3, the balance, except Y, 9-0. Z4 through Z12. Councilperson Gajewski?
Aye.
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Levaro?
Aye.
9-0 for Z4 through 12. 13 through 18, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Levaro?
Aye.
9-0 for 13 through 18. 19 through 27, noting we approved Z22 unanimously earlier in the meeting, councilperson Gajewski?
Aye.
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman? Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Levaro?
What are we voting on?
Balance of business, 19 through 27.
I vote aye, and just on Z27, um, let's, geez, 37 states have the same, same-sex marriage, um, hopefully the Supreme Court comes back with a positive verdict on that, and it'll be the law of the land. I vote aye.
Okay, 9-0 for Z19. Wait, 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 to adjourn, one second, please, at 11:36. Now make a motion somewhere.
Second.
Which is my councilperson Waterman?
The Bailey, always your black association meeting going there.
Councilperson Osborne?
It was Coleman.
Good night, Jersey City.
Good night.
Hey, good night, everyone.
Good night.